When we left session, we had concluded chapter, chapter 10, and we had indicated that we would return to chapter, chapter two on the, for the Department of, part one, for the Department of Education appropriation. And we had skipped that section while we had tried to work out, of course, the funding level for the Department of Education. And the Speaker and has met with the stakeholders and the management of the Department of Education. And we have come to a, an amendment that she has agreed to present to the body, which would indicate the funding levels for the Department of Education. And I'd like to ask the Speaker to make the presentation of the amendment. Those should have just been passed out to you. Speaker, you want that?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. So, everyone should have a copy, about three sheets of the amendment. And what this amendment would do then is that, and the motion I'd like to make, would be to replace Sections one and two, that's in the budget packet that you have, which will be pages nine, eight, nine, 10, and the top of 11, with the amendment that you have. And what you'll see then is that, on the first page is that the corrections that have been made, then to delete all of the numbers that are there, and then to replace it with the new figures. And these are figures that we, like the Chairman said, we met with the DOE officials to finalize the numbers. And one of the other things that we also would like to do that's in the amendment, to make it a lot clearer for everybody, is when you look at the special funds, and if you turn to the last page, it would break it down. The 18.3 million is broken down with the Territorial Educational Facilities Fund, the school lunch program of 100% reimbursement of 7.5 million, the Public School Library Resources Fund, and the school lunch program cash collections. So that there won't be any confusion in terms of what the special funds are of the 18 million. Mr. Chairman, I think that there should be a minor amendment here on page three. And that is, when you, on the special fund, is to delete the capital letters of SAE. Because that's not, it's not applicable to the DOE. That means these are monies in which, you know, there should be an agency. It's a federal fund, of course, program, and they do not oversee administratively, you know, what happens at DOE. So, that's the only other amendment I'd like to make. The third page?
All right.
The third page of the handout, and the capital letters where it says "school lunch", then SAE, just to delete the SAE. Yes, the top.
Okay, on that amendment, no objection to the amendment. On the SAE?
Oh, on the SAE, no, no objections to that, thank you.
Okay.
And I think that, I'm not sure, Mr. Chairman, whether the intention would be to put the utilities also as well in a bank?
Yes. No, the utilities for Department of Education is isolated to its own account.
Oh, okay.
Not part of the, yeah, it's part of the Department of Education's operations fund. It's not part of the executive branch utility bank.
Oh, okay.
So, this is appropriated directly to them. Anything?
That's it, I'm done, thank you.
All right, Senator Adada, and then Senator Rector.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, I just need to better understand. I noticed that the, the, I guess, the new grand total went from 183 to 193.
Yes.
And I'm just trying to figure, where did that 10 million come from?
Yeah. What, in the previous presentation, Senator Adada, the 183 total was, was not inclusive of the school nutrition program. And so what we did was, because we, the school nutrition program is not isolated to the general fund appropriation and the, and the school reimbursement, that there are other costs that are covered outside of that appropriation. There's the commodities that come from, from Defense Department Logistics. So what we did was, we actually took that appropriation and put it into contractual. And so it's all, that appropriation is now part of the contractual. We didn't separate it out, because the total cost for the school lunch program, including all resources, is not restricted to the 7.5, 1.5, and the 700,000. There's a, and so we, we put that in, into the contractual obligation, knowing and identifying the costs associated with that. So, we just added up and made it a, a single appropriation versus breaking out the operational and the school lunch. So that's the difference. Thank you very much, Senator Rector.
Thank you. Yes, I, just if I could get a little clarification on all this. And now that you've, you've talked about that, now we have gone from $1 million in contractual services to $13,306,539 in contractual services. Now, I understand how you pulled up the, you basically moved the $9,700,000 that was previously under the school nutritional meals into contractual services. Is that what I just heard you explain?
That's correct, that's, that's in that line item.
Right. Now, my question is, first off, why? I mean, there has to be a reason why this was done. And I just like a little clarification from, from the author, if she would relinquish to answer. I just, I'm learning as we go along.
It was, it was our recommendation on that. The school lunch program was, was not, we decided to, to...
Nothing, new, new rule on the floor. If your cellphone goes off, you owe $5 to the kitty. I just heard somebody, so, come on, Madam Speaker, that was your rule, enforce.
We will collect.
Sorry about the interruption, Mr. Chairman.
It was just confusing in terms of the total amount available to the Department of Education. And we, we wanted to include that, because a majority of the school lunch program is under the contractual obligation by Kings. In other words, there's a contract signed, entered into. And so we wanted to put it in there. Part of the contractual also included things like solid waste and Xerox and janitorial. But we wanted to put, because a large portion of the school lunch program is that contractual obligation to Kings. We put it in there, and then allowed them to pay it out of there and continue to support the school lunch program out of the total appropriation available to the Department of Education. We're going to allow, one of the things, the provisions would allow the superintendent to also move object, funding out of, out and into object categories as a, as part of the flexibility that we're going to give them.
Okay, so then, so then part of the reason, if, if my understanding is correct, is by putting these all together in a single category, it allows the superintendent to move money back and forth and to use, for instance, if she's short in a different contractual service, she can pull money temporarily out of the school fund and use it to cut grass or fix air conditioners. Is that the general intent of this?
That's, that's part of the intent, yes.
But not to cut grass, that's a separate funding.
That's a separate category.
Just, okay, just as an example. So theoretically, this allows her to use, use it for any contractual services, except cutting grass, I...
Yeah.
And, okay. Now, you say that like, one of the reasons we did this is because the majority of, of the school cafeterias are contracted to Kings. What's that number, about 60%?
All but nine cafeterias.
All but nine, so that'd be right around 75%.
I believe so.
So, then, how do we, are the, are the payment and the personnel and the procurement funds for the nine schools that still have public servants serving food to our children and using reusable trays as opposed to styrofoam, which goes into our dump, so that we have to come up with another dump bill in a couple of years? Where are the, where's that funding? Is that also in the contractual services funding?
It really, it's in supplies. Part of it is in supplies, when they buy supplies from Defense Logistics. Part of it is in salaries, because they actually charge the school nutrition program. There's federal funding for that program, that is paid for by the federal grant. So, it's not in one single category with regards to the support for the cafeteria. We did not, we did not isolate everything out. If you isolated the entire school feeding program, I think it's about 14 million. Or maybe, I'm sorry, 12, closer to $12 million. And so, but it, part of that is in the supply costs for food commodities. Part of it is in salaries, in which the federal reimbursement pays for those salaries. And so, that's why we kind of just moved it up into the operations budget and not separate the entire operation out. We would have had to charge administration to that, to that, and things like that. So, we tried to avoid some of that bookkeeping and accounting requirements if we had it completely separated out.
The other thing too, is that there's the USDA products that they get, and that has lowered, of course, the, the amount of the supplies and materials that cafeterias would need. And then, the 7.5 million is a 100% federally, federal fund reimbursement, but the government has to upfront the monies first before they start, before the government can start drawing down. So, that has to be placed in. And I know in the past, you're right, we've always separated it, and you didn't give the department much flexibility by, by doing so.
Okay. Yeah, then, I, I don't really mind the flexibility so much. I just, one of the things that, that we're looking at is, as we keep going, as we go through this budget, we've seen just huge amounts of money going to contractual services. I mean, gigantic amount of monies. And I mean, in this case, we see 13 million to contractual services. We've seen through DPW, tens of millions, and the port, tens of millions. And, and the trick is, is we're responsible for the people of Guam's money. We want to make sure that they get the best services for their, for their tax dollars as possible. And it, it just kind of worries me when I see this, you know, I'm just not having a good enough ability to, to separate this out. I mean, how do we know if the people are getting a good deal on these? And this is something that's been quite a concern of mine, because every time I look at these things, it seems like the people of Guam are getting a really bad deal out of it. The contractor's getting a great deal, but the people of Guam are, are getting a bad deal. And, so, you know, I won't make an amendment on, on this case, and I'll bow to the, to the wisdom of the, of the Speaker and her amendment on this. But it, it's definitely a concern of mine, just grouping money. I, one of the things I liked about your budget is that you broke it up, and we weren't just giving block amounts. And one of the big worries with, with DOE is, we're finding out even today, is their lack of accountability on, on processing of federal grants, and their lack of responsibility using federal money, which is why DOE, even today, is putting new regulations on their grants, and they're holding up ARA funding until we become compliant. So, I kind of worry, once again, when we start mixing federal money in with, with local dollars and allowing her to move things around within categories, federal money and local money. It's just a concern, and it's, I think it's a fairly valid concern, even as we find out, as we'll find out in the news today, once they release what the US DOE is doing with the ARA funding, we're all going to find out that they're having difficulty even as we speak. So, once again, I'll bow to the Speaker and her amendment. But I, I think she, we might want to revisit this in the future, but I know she has a meeting later on today with him, so I'll go with that.
I agree, we need to revisit this. You know, there was the audit done through the, an amendment in the last budget, I believe, that allowed, or that required an audit of the school lunch program. And even based upon those numbers, I think we still need to kind of go back and, and re-verify some of the basic assumptions that made those comparisons. And, and I think that that's going to happen. I certainly, we know we are, we're going to continue to take a look at the school lunch program and try to come to a true cost, you know, on the contractual versus the in-house program, and ensure that the costs are allocated, so we can actually come to an apples-for-apples comparison. But we do have that report from Evergreen on the school lunch program that did the audit.
Yes. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator Rector. Senator Cabo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I kind of, I echo the sentiments of the previous speaker. Before I ask my ques, before I make my statement, if you could please, and whether it's the Chair or Chris, or the Oversight Chair on Education, on contractual services, again, we have, we have a private contractor for school lunch, which probably, I get what, is, is the largest chunk of the contractual services. I would suppose, and correct me if I'm wrong, the next probably largest category would be the maintenance contractor?
Yes. Uh, no.
Xerox.
Xerox.
Okay, so Xerox. Is, in fact, enlighten me, what are the, what are the major contractual arrangements on this budget? We have, we have the copying machine?
Yes, we have copying machine, the custodial outsourcing, where you have full, full outsourcing and partial. And then you have computer maintenance, printings, and subscriptions, and solid waste. Remember those bins that each of the schools have?
So, the, the only difference here is we're eliminating a category that, that specified the amounts for reimbursement for the school lunch program and lumping it into contractual. The original 1,303,570 then was to be used for, for the Xerox, the, the maintenance, the ground maintenance, and what else again?
Custodial.
And custodial services. Custodial services.
No, it's not 1 million.
Again, I, I'm going to echo the sentiments of the earlier speaker. I'm not going to object to this, but, you know, this is something, and I recall the, in budget discussions, especially when it came to the school nutritional meal program.
Yeah.
And, and again, the, especially when it comes to Region 9, and, and, you know, the reasons why we've been put in, in fact, sometimes our federal money is in jeopardy because of the lack of reporting requirements or not, not fulfilling the mandates of those, of these programs. And, at least in the past, we've always had that notation, and it was actually placed in the budget on those reimbursements. When we lumped, in fact, that's one issue. The other issue, of course, is we've had problems in the past where we have contractors, and whether it's for food or for, for custodial services, having major issues on payment of their, of, of those amounts owed to them. I guess my concern is, when you lump this all together, there may be some issues that, where the federal government and our local administering agencies, there may be more complexity in that regard, in regards to reporting requirements and actual delineation of, of appropriation amounts for reimbursement. And then also, for the vendors, for the other contractual services. I guess my, my whole sentiment here is, if it ain't broken, don't fix it. Was there a major issue that caused the need for this? And was it from the federal government? Was it an issue within Guam Public School System themselves asking for this change?
Yes, Senator, the, the school lunch program, if, if you were to just appropriate the federal fund side, you don't get that money until you spend local funds. In other words, it's a reimbursement. So, we've got to front the money upfront. So if we're just appropriating on just the federal program, we don't have anything to start out with. So, what we needed to do was, was put it into the contractual so that it's part of the base operating budget, so that they can front the money upfront, and then they submit a voucher and a reimbursement request. And they usually get it, you know, three to five days later. But we've got to pay the cost upfront. So, it was kind of, if we separated it out, we didn't have enough, you know, we couldn't front that entire, that amount first before we got, because it's not part of that appropriation.
So, oh, I see. So, with the Guam Public School System officials, with, with it in the appropriating end or on the contractual end?
Right.
Then, there's a reasonable expectation of a quicker reimbursement?
That's correct.
Oh, so more, okay, so more of a, it's a cash flow issue?
Yeah, and an internal...
Okay. And that was, was that the main, the main?
That was, that was one of the main purpose. And, and again, it's the allocation, you know, when we, when we put this out in order to ensure that, that the money's there to, to keep, to front it, get reimbursed, front it, get reimbursed as we move along.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator Cabo. Any other comments or questions on the Department of Education? Senator Espada?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I'm just trying to also gain a better understanding of what happened between the original proposed budget and then this new amendment. I, I see that the regular salaries went up by 1.8 million dollars, and yet the benefits decreased by 2 million dollars. And I'm just trying to understand, first of all, I guess, that concept. I mean, normally, when you increase salaries, the corresponding benefits increase, increase on that level. And yet, in this case, we had an increase in salary, and yet the benefits decreased. If someone would just explain that, I'd appreciate it.
Chris? Yeah, that was just a...
There was just an error in the ratio between the salary and benefits lines. So there was too, too much in the appropriation for the benefits and not enough in the, in the salary line. So it was an adjustment to make those ratios fall into line with what the real cost is.
Okay.
So when it was initially done, it wasn't the correct ratio.
It was not the correct one.
That's correct.
Okay, and I appreciate that. And then I also noticed that, I guess to come within the budget, we've decreased supplies and materials to the schools by about 1.6 million dollars. And can you just kind of enlighten me on that? Why are we decreasing, we're increasing salaries and we're decreasing the number of, I mean, the amount that we're giving them in terms of support for their supplies? I don't know, I just...
What, what happened was, when we were meeting with the superintendent, there were some supplies that, that the superintendent determined could be, are eligible to be covered by the ARA funding. And so, we took those supply costs, and the superintendent agreed that she would allocate ARA dollars for that, and we left those dollars in that supply line for them to buy other supplies.
And then I guess, on the last item, we've decreased the appropriation for power from, by about 1 million dollars. And again, I'm just trying to understand the justification for that.
Yeah. Part of that is, is we looked at, we went back to our records and looked at the weatherization plan that Department of Education received 19, I mean, Guam Energy Office received 19 million dollars. And at the roundtable hearing, and the Department of Education had submitted a grant to the Guam Energy Office for weatherization of windows, doors, roof, air conditioning, maintenance, in terms of trying to get more efficient units. And Department of Energy, the Guam Energy Office indicated that, that they were very responsive to doing the, the windows. You know, these, weatherization of the windows would have put double-pane windows in there, insulated windows. Right now, they're the old louvers with some plexiglass, some of them, plexiglass are gone. So they're going to replace those windows out and do some weatherization. We think that with those kind of changes, that we're going to be able to realize some savings in the, in, in the power bills. Yeah, and, and so that was one, we're trying to, kind of making that assumption. Plus, on part of it, we're trying to balance the budget.
Okay, and I appreciate...
And I'll be, you know, truthful with that, of course.
Yeah, and I appreciate that explanation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you very much, Senator Espada. Any other comments? If not, on the amendment by the Speaker, no objections. The amendment carries. That concludes the discussion then on the Department of Education. Which brings us back to the, to the bill. What I wanted to ask and beg the indulgence of the body is, it brings us to the miscellaneous appropriations of chapter 11. And I wanted to, to see if, if we could suspend the discussion on the miscellaneous appropriation. We're still communicating with the retirement fund on trying to determine the exact amount of the supplemental annuities based upon retirement, applications for retirement. The same with the COLA. And we're trying to verify from the audits, the reimbursements that have been made by the autonomous agencies on the appropriations that are called for here, and the reimbursement of their retirees for these benefits. And so, that's probably, it's going to take us maybe about a day or more so to do that. And so we would request the indulgence to suspend the discussion on the miscellaneous appropriation and pick up the discussion then on the miscellaneous provisions of the budget. Is that, are there any, Senator Adada?
Mr. Chairman, may I, may I request your consideration to, that we go ahead and discuss Section 1, get that out of the way of the miscellaneous appropriations?
The streetlights, okay.
That's regarding the streetlights.
Sure. That's fine, that's fine. Any objections? Or no objections? All right. So the, the first part then, on the Section, Chapter 11, Section 1, is the public streetlights appropriation. This is the appropriation of 3,336,038 from the streetlight fund, and 9 million, I mean, 915,570 from the Guam Highway Fund to the utility bank to pay the Guam Power Authority for the installation and operation of public streetlights in FY 2010. And this is not the, there's an additional appropriation of 1,84,254 from the general fund to bring the total appropriation of this, for the streetlights to what we have been able to determine have been the actual billing that GPA, I mean, the Guam Department of Administration, Department of Public Works have received for the cost of running the current number of streetlights that are out there, as far as we can tell, based upon the continued work of the Mayor's Council and GPA to try and get to a final number on these things. But these, this is the actual billing we're receiving on this. And this should fully fund keeping these streetlights on at its current count based upon the historical billing that we have. Senator Adada?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, we add up those three amounts, it comes up to about 5.3 million dollars.
That's correct.
Based on my discussion with the Guam Power Authority, they project that the annual billing for the streetlights in question will, for the year 2010, will be approximately 5.6 million. On top of that, there was an outstanding receivable from 2009...
On top of that, there was an outstanding receivable from 2009 of 390,000, which I understand that the legislature had, I guess, pretty much told the governor's office that, you know, they should pay it out, transfer or whatever, but that was never done. So that receivable is still out there. So what Guam Power Authority is looking at, that will be needed to satisfy the streetlight receivables for 2010 will be approximately 6 million dollars. So there's a shortfall already of, and that's a rounded figure, actually it's 5,990,000, leaving then a shortfall of about 654,000 for the year 2010. Now, I guess the issue of the outstanding 390,000 from FY 2009 and the fact that the projected billing is going to be 300,000 more, I think we need to take measures now to mitigate that shortfall. And so to do that, I would propose that on line, on line eight of page 128, that that should read then, "Bank fund to pay the Guam Power Authority for the operation of public streetlights in fiscal year 2010." So we delete the words, we delete, we delete the word installation, installation and. So it makes it very clear then that the, the amounts being appropriated is just to pay for what is existing out there. And you cannot use it then to install new streetlights. We should also note that of course, in a, in another provision under the Mayor's Council, the Mayor's Council is being appropriated 100,000 for the relocation of public streetlights in the villages. So that then those funds allows them to transfer existing, an existing streetlight on Pole A and put it up on Pole B somewhere else in the village. And so then the net gain will be of the number of streetlights is zero. So, Mr. Chairman, that is my amendment to delete the word installation and on line eight and on line 13.
Okay. On the ADA amendment, which would to delete and installation on line eight and the same language on line 13, to delete that language also. Any discussion? Senator Tiede?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning. If you do that in this section right here, installation, what happens to those new developments that they have in, in other areas where they need to install new streetlights? Can you help me on that?
Senator Ada, will you yield to that question?
Well, I, some of that might be addressed by the, that 100,000 that's been appropriated to pay for the relocation of streetlights. So that's where the mayors will really have to sit down and take a look at, you know, is this particular streetlight better off relocated to a, a new subdivision? But other than that, I, you know, that's, that's going to be a new, that's going to be a new cost and it's going to require new dollars and, and it's going to have to be resolved at that point. But right now, we need to be able to pay for what is out there.
If I could just provide some information, the 5,000,336,038 is the number that was, for the streetlight, the total appropriation from the different sources, is a number that was submitted by the governor and we accepted that number. We talked to the controller of GPA and asked him what is a good number based upon the current consumption and maintenance of the streetlight. And he took their current billing and experience for the first six months of the year and informed us that based on his projections, or based on his numbers, I'm sorry, and the consumption on the first six months, we projected, the OFB projected it out and we project a 5 million dollar total bill. So we saw the governor's 5.3, our projection is, is 5, 5 million. We went with the governor's additional. So there may be, depending on who's right, there may be additional money in there available for new, but again, we don't know that. We just, those are our best guess based upon information we received from GPA. So, yes, Senator Ada?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. And I did speak also with the chief financial officer at GPA. He came back with 5 million and I said, are you sure? And, and in the end, he says, well, okay, 5.6 million is really the more comfortable figure.
Okay.
So, you know, I, I, and, you know, I, I think 5.6 million is probably conservative, just as this bill, I mean, just as this budget bill is, is being very conservative, 5.6 million certainly is a conservative estimate, projection.
All right, thank you. Senator Tiede, I'm sorry, you may continue, please. Okay, thank you. Any other discussion on the ADA amendment? And that would be to delete and installation and on page 128, line eight and line 13? Any objections? No objections? The amendment carries. So again, if we could suspend the discussion then on Section 2 of 2, 3, the supplemental annuities and the COLA. We would then, 5, Section 5 and Section 6, suspend discussion on that until we get our, some final numbers from the Department of Administration as well as the retirement fund, which would take us to Section 6. Section 6 is the appropriation earlier asked by Senator Ada regarding the TOSI appropriation. Any questions? No questions? Section 7, additional vacancy pool appropriation. Senator Palacios on Section 7?
Mr. Speaker, I, Mr. Chairman, I have an amendment that's being passed out, just a simple amendment to Section 7.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh. What's it?
On, on Chapter 12?
No, we're still on Chapter 11?
Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah. We're still, we're still on page 136, Section 7. Senator Palacios?
My, okay, the amendment is being passed out. Actually, this amendment is just, Mr. Chairman, to make sure that, remember the 200,000 that the Speaker amended amendment against the overtime amount for the Department of Corrections to reduce it by 20,000 and to put it under this section? And that amendment, Mr. Speaker, is just to make sure that at least 200,000 is for the purpose of hiring additional corrections officers, which would be about maybe 10 or 11 based on the 30,000 salary and benefit package. I indicated when we were Department of Corrections that the, the department is actually in, in the process of having 18 new additional correctional officers, just waiting for this budget to pass. But when the, I supported reducing, of course, their initial overtime allowance of over 800,000 by 300,000 to come here. And the amendment is just, Mr. Speaker, to, Mr. Chairman, to make sure that at least the 20,000 is available to hire additional correctional officers. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you very much. On the Palacios amendment, Senator Rector?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have absolutely no, no problems with this. The, it's just that this is a huge percentage of the, of the pool. Does this cover if, if we allocate more than a third of our, of our vacancy pool appropriation just for additional correction officers? That leaves us with two-thirds of this less to cover DOE, GPD, not DOE. DOE has a separate pool.
Yeah, it'll be just the executive branch, not covering ref tax, ref tax as well.
Point of clarification, Mr. Chairman?
Just Senator Palacios?
I fail to indicate...
Just that clarification?
I fail to indicate that when the amendment to transfer 200,000 from the Department of Corrections to this section, the figure 800,000 should change by the same amount.
Right.
So it would actually be 1 million point, something. So actually, the 864,000 here will remain as it is. And add, add on 200,000, but the 300,000 that to be added on is what is my amendment is going to deal with. It's not taking anything out of the 864,000.
Okay.
See, that would have been adjusted actually at that point.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Senator Palacios, I need to clarify.
Okay.
When Senator, when Speaker Wampat reduced the overtime and put it into a vacancy, it stayed within the Department of Corrections. So if you took, it did not go to this vacancy pool. It just stayed within the budget of the Department of Corrections.
I didn't know that. I mean, that, that's even better then.
Yeah.
But see, the amount under the vacancy must be changed then.
Yes, that changes to 300 in that vacancy section at Department of Corrections.
So I withdraw this amendment then because it's not valid?
Yes, I'm sorry, I forgot that that was...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That was the amendment to Speaker.
That's even a better arrangement.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I withdraw the amendment.
Okay. So Senator Palacios is withdrawing the amendment based upon the reiteration of, of what happened when the Speaker reduced the overtime. She just changed it and transferred it to the vacancy line in that Department of Corrections provision. There's a vacancy at the Department of Corrections in each of these agencies and some of them have the amount very... This vacancy pool really is, what we tried to do was build this vacancy pool for those individuals that have been deployed and were not in the third quarter staffing pattern that they anticipate returning. But we don't know exactly when and we don't know how soon. So we decided to put a vacancy pool together, having identified some of those positions that will be returning sometime in the fiscal year. And so we, we wanted to isolate that and, and put that into this pool. So this is meant for those guys that will be returning from deployment throughout the various agencies, of which GPD probably is the biggest and FIRE has those type of vacancies. So Senator Palacios, no objection to the withdrawing of the amendment. Okay? So we are now on miscellaneous provision. Section 1. Or can we just take a short? Can we just take a, just a short recess then? The Committee of the Ho is back in session. We are now on Chapter 12 under the miscellaneous provisions section of the bill. Section 1 is a section that amends the indirect cost fund program and it adds a... Section 1 is a section that amends the indirect cost fund program, and it adds a additional use and purpose of which the fund may be used for, and that would be for an automated budget development and maintenance. And again, this... The indirect cost fund is taken from the federal grants, and it's allowed to be used by DOA and BBMR. And so we also wanted to work with BBMR to develop some kind of computerized software system for automating the budget process, so that we were able to save time and resources. And so it would allow a new section, subsection D, for the use of the funds. And then in 221504, for the deposit and expenditures, we wanted to cap the administrative reimbursement to DOA and BBMR, the indirect costs, to 5%. The Governor had, I think, recommended that we actually zero it out and not even charge an indirect cost. But we wanted to provide some resources to DOA and BBMR on an ongoing basis for training, supplies, and so forth, related to managing and administering these federal programs. The indirect cost reimbursement is developed and allowed by the Department of Interior and BBMR. This... And every year, they give you an amount. And this year, I think, the indirect cost that they're allowed to retain is about 26%. In the case of, for example, the child support program, which receives a grant, it actually takes away about 500,000 of the grant funds for indirect costs. And by capping it at 5, we're allowing the program to use more of the program funds for program activity and reserving only 5% for overhead and administration. And so this caps it at 5% for admin, which leaves more money for the programs in the federal grants. And BBMR and the Department of Administration have both... We discussed it with them, and they both agree that they don't need the entire 26, that they really should leave those in the departments and agencies for the program funds, rather than taking them out for admin, which is excessive in this case. So it changes that and caps it at 5, and then it just allows for the use of the fund to be for... One of the allowable uses is for an automated budget development and maintenance. Any discussion on the... Senator Cavlo?
Yeah, again, just a further clarification. I remember, Mr. Chair, as a previous chair, trying to get a bearing of these differing revenues coming into the government, specifically from the federal government.
Right.
And again, this particular fund was created in the current budget?
No, that's correct.
Or FY09?
That's correct.
Again, just some questions. When was the last indirect cost rate negotiated or approved?
I think it's 26.1 is the last indirect rate that was given, that the Governor of Guam was notified to be available to be charged on federal grants by the Department of Interior is the one that gives that amount to BBMR and the Governor of Guam.
And that's the current approved rate now?
That's the current approved rate.
And so the federal cap is 20...
6... 26 point something.
So this... This 5% cap?
Right.
Was this a determination made by this body? Or, I mean, was it a recommendation put forward by the administration?
It was our discussion. BBMR actually wanted to just eliminate the indirect cost allocation and the fund itself, and taking that indirect cost allocation and depositing it into a separate account, you know, and then just appropriate money for them out of the general fund for training and what the fund was intended to do, to support their portion of the work that supports administering the federal grants. They have to file some reports, DOA does, and things like that, coordinating it and so forth. So rather than taking the entire 26%, they said that 5% would be a max whenever it's allowed. Not all grants allow indirect costs. You have to apply for it. When you apply for the grant, you also have to apply for... To be able to get additional money for indirect costs, and then you're able to charge it out.
Yeah, some of these grants are multi-year in length, and I'm wondering, are there any indirect costs right now, reimbursements, that are exceeding 5%?
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah.
In some, it's 26%.
Yeah. What... So with this implementation to law?
Right.
And we set the fight, what happens with those amounts above the 5%?
They... What happens is, they remain with the agency that has awarded the grant, and they get to use it for the program.
Okay.
So, for example, child support.
Yeah.
Child support was being charged 26%. So, let's say, 8 million that they get, 26% of that goes to overhead and administration, and the balance goes to supporting the child support program. In this case, we don't have to charge that, and we say 5%, a maximum of 5, will be charged on that.
Yeah.
And then the balance stays within the Attorney General's office, and they're able to use it for their program funds to administer and manage on their level the child support program.
Yeah.
So it actually increases their operational budget by about half a million dollars.
And it's interesting, I'm not saying whether it's the right policy or not.
That's right.
It's just that, I guess, in the past, there was a lot of these indirect costs that just get thrown into the general fund.
That's correct.
And so, again, that's a policy call of the body, just something to bring up. If it was thrown into the general fund, then it is subject to, again, the wishes of the body. With this here, you're fortifying the... Those programs specific to an agency that had been granted a federal program.
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Cavlo. Any other discussion? Senator Spodan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That's correct. Section 1. Just for your information, the indirect cost for FY08 was 26.64. For FY09, it's 26.95.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just still trying to understand how this all works. At that negotiate... Or at that rate of 26%, you're saying that... And sometimes you have to apply for that indirect cost when it comes to federal grants. And sometimes they grant it, sometimes they don't.
Right.
And the... I would imagine that the objective of those indirect cost monies is for the administration of the program that this grant is supposed to go to.
That's correct.
Is that correct? And so I guess the... I mean, I understand where we're going with this in terms of trying to reduce the amount that goes to administration and to increase the amount that actually goes directly to the beneficiary, the intended beneficiary of these programs.
Right.
Right? That is...
That's the intent, yes.
That is the intent. I guess on the... The concern I have is that we might be trying to increase the money that goes directly to the beneficiaries, but if we don't have the proper number of... The logistical support to be able to administer that program, then those monies will not get to the intended beneficiaries. And so I'm just questioning the... I mean, I understand, we're trying to get as much money, but again, to drop from a 26% rate all the way down to 5, while seemingly justifying more money going... Justified by the fact that more money would be going to recipient, in essence, the opposite could also be true, that you would actually have less people getting the benefits, because now... And especially in these times when we're seeing a lot of federal funds coming in, whether or not we have the staffing level to be able to get those monies out in a timely and efficient, effective manner. And I guess I'm just wondering if you could speak to that?
Yes. Actually, it's the opposite. Because when you say you take the overhead... The indirect costs, you take it out, you take it out of that agency, so that the indirect costs can be used by that agency to hire staff for the administration of the program within the agency. When we do the indirect costs and when we did the indirect cost fund, we're actually able to take that 26% and take it out of the agency and put it in this indirect cost for DOA and BBMR.
Okay, so at the administrating... I mean, at that level... Excuse me. So at BBMR and at DOA, they're the ones who are capped at 5%?
Right.
And then, so most of that... More money goes into the agency, in which they can then start employing, if necessary, more people to administer these funds?
That's correct. It's the money... It's the amount we can take out of the indirect costs for BBMR and DOA. The rest and the balance stays with the agency.
Okay, that makes sense to me. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, we'll then go to Section 2. Section 2 is the utility bank. As you saw in the separation of the budget by the different agencies, the amount for power and water and sewer is appropriated out of the agency into this utility bank to be used for the utility charges for the executive branch department. So it actually basically pools that amount and allows the Governor the greatest flexibility in that... In moving the utility bank payments from one agency to the other agencies and so forth. So it just isolates that, so that GPA can say, for example, "We have this much money appropriated to pay the power bills for these departments and agencies, and we have identified where they're coming from, but they all go into this central fund, which will then be used to pay the power and water and sewer bills of the agency." So, Senator Cavlo?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I'm going to preface my statement, because I do know that, you know, over the past few years, we've taken... We've eliminated certain special funds. But I was just going over the compiler of laws on their website. We do have an existing utility expense fund. And as far as, at least, looking at the compiler of laws, it's still there in the books. And that's why I just want to clarify if it's been eliminated, and maybe you can help me on this. If it still is still a fund that has not been X-ed out, is there a reason for why we just don't use the utility expense fund rather than this new fund?
Uh, no, I just... I wasn't aware that that was codified.
There's so many. 5GCA, Chapter 22. And you know what? We did... There's been so many special funds.
And that... We also... Remember, we wiped out a whole bunch at the request of the OPA?
Yeah, and that's why I'm qualifying this, but I think we can do some research on this.
Sure, sure.
Because if... I think that may not have... It's in the compiler laws website, and if it's still there, that may be one of the funds that has not been eliminated.
Right.
And maybe we can make the change, rather than creating new fund, but just using the established fund.
Yes, and that would be the same intent, Senator Cavlo.
Okay.
Thank you very much for bringing that to our attention. We'll look at that, and if it is, then it's a technical amendment to allow us to do that? Is that... Are you...
No objection, Mr. Chair.
Okay, all right. Okay. Thank you. Any other comment on the utility bank fund? If not, we'll proceed then to the health benefit fund. Again, this is... Oh, you still... Yes. Oh, Senator Ada, I'm sorry, I was asking for additional comments.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, on Section 2 in the utility bank fund, and also, my question pertains also to Section 3, but in those sections, it directs that all appropriations in this act and subsequent laws to the utility bank fund for power, water, the executive branches shall be deposited into the utility bank fund and used exclusively. And it's not clear at what rate those deposits are going to be made into that fund. I mean, you know, they could wait to the end of the year and put in what's available, or we could put in language that says that it's to be deposited into the utility bank fund at the rate of 25% per quarter. But at least, there's definite that, you know, every quarter, you're going to put in a certain amount.
Okay.
So that would be my amendment, is that on line 4 then, it would read, "Deposited into the utility bank fund at the rate of 25% per... At the rate of at least 25% per quarter." And that same amendment would be made on line 10, in that funds will be deposited into the health benefit fund at the rate of at least 25% per quarter.
Can I call for any comments on that? Can I call for just a one-minute recess? All right. Committee of the Ho is back in session. Senator Ada?
Mr. Chairman, okay, based then on our discussion during the recess, I will withdraw that motion and make a new motion that then we would add the additional language, "Deposited to the utility bank fund at the rate of..." Bank fund, monthly, at the rate of 1...
1/12 of the total...
1/12 of the total amount.
Okay.
All right, so that would apply on line 4 and at line 10 after the word "health benefit fund."
Okay. On that amendment, there's no objections? The amendment carries? Okay. We're now at the health benefits fund? Senator Rector?
Mr. Speaker, as we're... We've kind of been jumping around a little bit. I wonder if I might go back to the miscellaneous appropriation in Chapter 11 before we go on? I have an amendment for a new Section 8.
Oh, no.
Well, we've already handled Section 6 and Section 7 of the miscellaneous appropriations on Chapter 11. I do believe... I could be wrong, but I believe we discussed Section 7, and even Senator Palacios introduced amendment to Section 7.
That's right, no, we did. We tabled Section 2 through 6, and then we went through Section 6 and Section 7, and Senator Palacios made an amendment on Section 7, and he withdrew it.
Correct.
Okay, so is there a...
There's an amendment in writing that's been distributed to everybody. And it's quite a hefty new section.
Okay. Senator Rector, I'll go ahead then and allow you to present your proposed amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. As my colleagues might note, this is a fairly hefty provision and amendment. So let me just summarize very quickly, and I'm sure everybody is going to want to take a little time to sink in on this. Basically, what this does is generate revenue for the Governor of Guam. It's long been known by the people of Guam, and lots of complaints have been that our property taxes are very low. And the rest of the nation, they fund... They fund property taxes, or they fund the public education system with property taxes alone. Now, obviously, we can't do that. I believe on our revenue generating, we only came up with about 15 million in property taxes, off the top of my head, which wouldn't come anywhere close to funding our public education system, let alone very much else. So what this does, instead of... The reason is, my understanding, that we've never addressed the property tax issues, because there are a significant portion of our population that are land-rich but cash-poor. They have a big lot of family land, but not a lot of money, so if we raised property taxes on property, this would hurt landowners and cause property-rich but cash-poor people in our society to lose their families' lands, which nobody wants, and that's a bad idea.
Mr. Chairman, point of inquiry, please.
Senator Ada, on your point of inquiry?
Mr. Chairman, this is a substantive amendment to be made, and I would just ask, this has not had a public hearing that I'm aware of, and I would ask the Chair to rule on whether this particular amendment will be entertained.
Thank you very much. I'm going to call for a short recess then. I was trying to finish reading it to try and get to a decision on that. So I'll just call for a short recess. So I'll just call for a short recess. The Committee of the House is back in session. Senator Rector, I've read the amendment, and the amendment proposes to impose a, and change the way that the real estate tax is assessed on different, real property on Guam. And as such, the amendment really, in my opinion as chair, number one, it requires a public hearing. We have not had a public hearing on the issue of raising the, and changing the structure of the tax on the real estate. And as such, I'm going to, to rule that while it may be related, it's not germane to the budget bill for the appropriation of existing revenues for the operations of the government of Guam. So I'm gonna rule that it cannot be placed on the budget bill in the fashion without the public hearing having been conducted under proposed taxing scheme presented in this bill.
Then I have a point of inquiry on that. So if in this case, we can't amend current tax code, which is what this does, it amends a current tax code in the budget bill, does that mean that we can't amend any other tax code, any other current tax code in the amendment? For instance, I know last, last, last budget, we amended the amount collected for every H-2 visa. So if you ruled that this is out of order, would you also rule that we couldn't do that again this time?
Yes.
Unless we already had a public hearing on the issue?
Unless we had a public hearing on the issue.
So we can't address any new, any tax code, any, anything whatsoever unless it's had a public hearing?
That, yes.
And that, so that is your rule? And I just wanna make sure I'm clear on this.
That is my ruling.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Senator, my ruling is that when, that is my ruling, and again, it's, when it's, changes the, it amends existing law related to the budget or any other existing law, and it has not had a hearing, then it would, I would rule that, and had not been discussed, then I would rule that it would not be allowed to be placed on the budget bill. Senator Cruz, did you have a?
Wouldn't it have a second problem? I mean, because I'm not trying to propose my, my, my tobacco tax at this point.
Right.
I'll wait for a completely different day. But how do we address the referendum issue?
Which refer?
Unless, unless it has a notwithstanding provision, it would also have a problem of not having had a referendum, a tax amendment, wouldn't it?
Oh, that's correct. Yeah. So that is correct. Unless it was, it had that notwithstanding, so, okay. All right, so that is the ruling of the chair. Thank you very much. Okay, so we are, Section 4, the vacancy pool. Okay? This vacancy pool, again, as I explained earlier, it allows a pool of vacancies, it allows a vacancy pool that is, that is put into place for the executive branch to draw from, to be able to hire individuals for the different departments and agencies that show up on the staffing patterns as being funded. So it kinda puts it, all these vacancies into this vacancy pool. The governor then, because of his authority over the executive branch, and based upon his discussions with the directors, would then prioritize the positions to be filled and to be funded out of this vacancy pool. And it'll, and it'll be for the new hires after October 1st of 2009. Senator Cruz?
Mr. Chairman, when we were in DYA, I mentioned that there were some vacancies that I wanted addressed, and you said somehow it was gonna be taken care of in this. Is there legislative history, or do we make it specific that, that a couple of those, the positions in this vacancy pool are to be reserved for the DYA positions? Because the DYA one was the second one. There was some, there was one other department that you guys had determined that within the vacancy pool, there was going to be a reservation for that vacancy. And then when I brought up the problem at DYA, there was also, you-
Yes.
Mentioned that somehow the reservation, or somehow, it was going to be addressed in this, and I'm trying to figure out, where is it here stated that the DYA positions would be taken care of?
Okay.
Or do we just take legislative history and hope that somebody reads it, or it's transcribed somewhere so that the governor knows that some of this money's supposed to be used for the vacant therapeutic counselor position at DYA?
Yeah, it'll be based on legislative history, and also in the DYA, it would identify the positions, the number of positions that are to be filled, that are vacant and funded. There was the ruling in, during Governor Gutierrez's time, that said you could not bind the governor to, in identifying exact positions of which to hire. You could pass the law, but in the end, he has that discretion in that Attorney General's opinion that was issued and never challenged. But what we've done is, when we went to the departments and agencies, we identified the agencies where the vacancies occur, and based upon the presentation at the public hearing, based upon the submission of the staffing patterns, we said, there's these vacant, there's a number of vacancies to be filled, and then it'll really be up to the governor and his director to make then the decision, and for them to lobby with the governor that out of this vacancy pool, that they prioritize those positions. But we could not, according to that Attorney General's opinion, tell the governor which positions to fill, in these, which vacant positions to fill. We can fund them and identify them, but he prioritizes.
But I think in the, in the DYA position, we had, it had been eliminated.
Did we? I thought we, did we identify the vacant positions, the number in the DYA?
There was a reduction in the, in their-
We'll have to take a look at that, Senator Cruz. We're looking at that right now.
Oh, no.
Oh, I understand what happened. Senator Cruz, they did not have vacancies. You wanted to indicate that they wanted, that they would fill those vacancies, correct? Is that?
I thought that they had told me that they had vacancies. They had a therapeutic position that had been vacant for a while, they'd been asking downtown for it, and it hadn't been filled.
Okay. So what we could do is amend their-
Okay, so it's not in here that this is addressed, and so, but we're gonna need to somehow-
Address it.
Correct that if we can.
Okay.
And maybe as a point of inquiry now, if I could address a different issue.
All right.
Because of this recent spate of procurement problems, I'd been on the telephone with the Attorney General's office. I missed the earlier part of the session today because I was on the phone with her, trying to figure out how we address this issue with procurement problems and getting, you know, there's a position at the OPAs, there are, there's a policy board, and I think there had been discussion at her hearing with you about having specific, a specific person or a specific, not a division, but a section in the Attorney General's office where the attorney and, and the attorney's staff person would be responsible for shepherding procurement and bids from its inception to the end. I mean, and there would be a threshold, because-
Yes.
A $15,000 one wouldn't be, but, but this thing where, you know, we're having a problem with JFK, we're having a problem with the school lunch, we're having a problem with, you know, the ports, 350,000. It was her, our discussion at least, that she thought that maybe if an amount had been set aside or given to her office for a procurement attorney with specific responsibility to just shepherd procurement, much like what Bob Kona was doing, but Bob's now back up at-
Civil service or?
Civil service. I mean, he used, for a while, he was detailed down to GSA, and he knows, he knows procurement backwards and forwards, but he's now up at civil service. But to have someone like, with his experience, but out of the Attorney General's office to shepherd these things through, she thought that maybe a $300,000 appropriation for a senior attorney with experience and a staffer would be able to save us a considerable amount of litigation if we had someone following these through. I mean, it's that whole prevention, an ounce of prevention is worth, you know, millions in prescription, prescriptive care at the end. And so that wouldn't be in this either. I would need to have a completely separate, would it be a miscellaneous provision or an administrative provision?
We could probably put it in the administrative provision. We did that though, for example, Senator Rispio, just for your information, and if you recall, Senator Rispio put in a provision for the consent decree, trying to get us out of the receivership and dedicated in a, we had funded, I think, two attorney positions in the Attorney General's office in their new budget, and so he put in a provision, I think it was in the Attorney General's provision, and I think, I forgot who did the one for mental health, for the, I think Senator Ogden, for the consent, the amended consent decree. So it would be something similar to that provision, and we would go back to just the Attorney General's chapter and put it in there. And I don't, I think, once we kinda move forward on this, and then we go back to where we had left off, then maybe at the end, we'll be able to go back to certain chapters to make some kind of amendments. And if there's no objection, we'll allow you to kinda draft that up and then go back.
So I shouldn't try to put it in administrative provision?
Yeah, I wouldn't-
I should try to, I should try to get it back in that same one.
In the chapter for the AG.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, okay. Thank you very much, Senator Cruz. Okay. Section 5 is the debt reduction, and this is, Senator Rector? Yeah, yeah, this deficit reduction is the provision that was enacted into law by 22436 of Article 4, Chapter 22, Title 5. And it basically reserves 2% of the revenues in any fiscal year beginning this year to pay for past due obligations of the government of Guam, prior-year obligations. And by statute, these include tax refunds, vendor payables, and in this provision, we add back pay for employees or other obligations resulting from judgments or awards approved prior to FY 2010 by any regulatory body, court, or administrative authority, which remain unpaid at the beginning of FY 2010. And that this is where we will now dedicate the payment of these prior-year obligations. In the past, we've kinda allowed them to come out of current year revenues or current year appropriations for the operating expense of the departments and agencies. And because we've now reserved a portion of the revenues for deficit reduction, these prior-year obligations are exactly what deficit reduction's all about. And so rather than charging them against the current appropriation of the departments and agencies, which leaves them short for their current fiscal year, we're now charging it against these prior year, or this 2% reserve for deficit reduction. And so that's what this section is about. Senator Rector?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I congratulate you on this provision. It's, it's something that's been a long time coming and needed to get done, so congratulations. I just have an amendment that will hopefully clarify and prioritize the deficit reduction a little bit. So I submit the following amendment. Everybody should have copies in writing on your desk. If you can dig through and find them, I know we all have lots of paper on our desk at this point. So it's to add the following to the section. It says, "First, on the last day of each month, the Director of Revenue and Tax shall deposit 2% of all unappropriated general fund revenues collected in excess of appropriations for that month into a deficit reduction fund. Payment for prior-year obligations shall be paid out monthly from the deficit reduction fund," I'm having trouble speaking this morning, "in the following order of priority. First, money owed to public employees for past two wages, overtime, judgments, with the oldest obligation being paid first. Second, money owed to individual citizens for unpaid EITC, COLA, tax refunds, or judgments, with the oldest obligation being paid first. Third, money owed to nonprofit organizations, the oldest obligation being paid first. And last but not least, for-profit vendors, the oldest obligation being paid first."
Okay, thank you. Are you finished discussing?
If I could talk about the amendment?
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, one of the things, for the first paragraph, one of my, one of my fears is, and when I, when I looked at the code, was that it didn't make sure that this money actually went into this account. And you and I had discussed that, and even as much as you reassured me, I was hoping to just, to tighten this up a little bit, just to make sure that as soon as the money comes in, 2% of it goes right into that account, so we start taking care of our deficit reduction. Then the second thing that worried me is that when we look at the order of priority, I don't know about your office, but I get calls every day from public employees that are struggling to make ends meet, and when money has been taken from them inappropriately, right, because they were illegally docked pay or some other function, they, they should be paid back first. Just- pay or some other function, they should be paid back first. Just without a doubt in my mind, if we don't treat our own employees and the government of Guam good, how can we expect to treat anybody else well as well? Then the second one is individual citizens and individual people, right? Once again, the working families of Guam need this money back, as you so eloquently put forward in your tax refunds and COLA and EITC payments, especially EITC. When the poorest of our society can't get the money they're owed as fast as possible, it leaves us up to problems. Then, of course, nonprofit organizations are always struggling for operating funds. And last but not least, for-profit vendors, if you're a for-profit company working for the government of Guam, you have a revenue backlog, and you have a capital cushion, so to speak, to help carry you through the late times. And then all of these have first in, first out, right? So the oldest obligation gets paid first, and the newest one, which only makes sense to me, and hopefully it'll make sense to my colleagues. Now, that being said, pursuant to the law that we just passed, I have to do a financial disclaimer on this, and I also sent it pursuant to the law to the speaker's website, which the law says, when I was a teacher many, many years ago, the school board delayed the start of school by two weeks and stole the paycheck from the teachers of Guam, and that's already gone through the Civil Service Commission, it's already been ruled on, and it just, those teachers have never been paid, and I would be one of those teachers. So I just want to disclose that so that everybody knows. It's a fairly old debt, but once again, this isn't for me, it's for the other 1,800 teachers that were lost out, and everybody else in the government of Guam that has owed money by this government. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator Rector. Senator Titegui on the Rector amendment? Oh, I'm sorry, Senator Palacios.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman, first of all, I'd like to commend you for your foresight in including such a provision. It's about time, really, that to include the consideration of paying judgment in favor of employees against the government of Guam. I mean, we have had this judgment rendered by Civil Service Commission by the courts, and they have not been settled. And the excuse is, well, it's prior obligation, it's a, whatever. This provision takes care of that. And of course, I rise in support of the Rector amendment. Listing down the priorities, they're all important, but then, of course, being number one, the judgment notwithstanding, I have in my office from the fire department, is a 12-year-old court judgment that even the AG recommended that it be settled, and it's not. So those are the things, and again, first of all, I support definitely Section Five and the inclusion of all these things, and the Rector amendment prioritizing it. Again, all of this is important, but as it is laid out, we have limited funds. The priority listing here is proper. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator Palacios. Senator Titegui?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You have, Mr. Chair, you have been very good about this budget, putting everything in very, since the first time here, reading the budget and understanding it, putting everything in place completely, that this area here, if it's so needed, this type of format, which I do support, that people should be paid first. I don't agree with the author of the bill that, you know, for-profit vendors to be considered the lesser ones. I mean, they're the ones bringing in things to supply these people so they can continue to work, and for him to say that these are the lesser kind of people, if they also provide for a family too, and this can also detrimentize them by not being able to keep their business in place to provide these services. But I have to ask you, Mr. Chair, being it is my first time, why did you not consider putting this in, and has it ever been done in the past where you have put, itemized it, what comes first, second, third, and fourth, with regards to this Section Five? But I don't think you heard me, because you were talking.
Apologize, Senator Titegui.
That's okay. My question is that you've been so thorough with the budget, and in this Section Five, I'm pretty sure if you saw the importance of itemizing something like this, or placing what first, second, and third, that you would have done something like that. And I'm questioning, why did you not do something like that, or...
Basically, what I did was, I, the statute that passed, which allowed for this deficit reduction, had a listing of allowable payments to come out of this fund. And so I basically took that statute and reiterated it in here. And then we also amended it to include the judgments for the employees. And then it was, so it was just a listing, and we just left it according to the original legislation. And so Senator Rector is proposing that in this budget, it be set aside and prioritized in this manner. And that's just a preference that Senator Rector wanted, and I wanted to be more general with regards to the original authority that was in the statute.
Okay. With that respect, and what's being able to pay for these in Section Five, but to be able to say what comes first, second, and third, it's a play-by-play basis. You can't make one more important than the other. You can actually, in number one, I mean, I do agree in number one, paying the public employees, that's very important, but two, three, and four, you know, to determine who's next, you know? And there's so many situations, like the previous speaker spoke about, you know, judgments that for people who are waiting for years and years to get paid, you know, that's prior obligations, maybe that should come first. So I have to object to this amendment with regards to prioritizing what comes first, second, third, and fourth. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. Senator Cavill, you're next.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I'm not here to question, you know, that's really a policy call of this body in regards to first, second, third, or fourth priority. The issue I have is on, again, you read the language, on the last day of each month, the Director of Revenue and Tax shall deposit 2% of all unappropriated general fund revenues collected in excessive appropriation for that month into a deficit reduction fund. Payment for prior year obligation will be paid out monthly from the deficit reduction fund account. You know, and you know about tracking of revenues, Mr. Chair. Even now, when we were going over some of the debate and dialogue, looking to the future, no one is 100% sure how you're going to end up that year. And when you, even when the tracking, when we had our discussions and maybe disagreements earlier in the process about what was tracking, what potentially is, you know, prevailing economic variables for the next month or the next few months, where there was, yeah, we may have an idea what we think we will hit in revenues by the end of the year, but we're not God. There's no perfect calculation. We don't even know what will happen, will there be a new epidemic that hits? Something will hit, a war, you would hate to see it happen, but things happen. The way I look at this, the way it's written, you're on a monthly basis establishing whether you are going according to an appropriate, I would figure an appropriation level that either was straight line from divided by 12 or 13 periods, or you're going on a potential tracking of what you anticipated over a year. One month is, you know, January is not the same as May, it's not the same as October. What would happen here, and again, if I read this amendment, for any given month where maybe there is a receipt of revenues higher than what was anticipated, then that would be taken out and to be used for purposes here with stated in the amendment. You know, there are times that we've had over the past few years where we've had some great months that exceeded expectations on a straight-line basis or on what was the previous fiscal year amount. But at the end of it all, there were months that were afterward that really went below expectation, so at the end of the year, we didn't hit the original anticipated revenue figures. This is basically now, and it is a major change, where you're looking at a monthly collections, and from that, making a determination, and with that determination, paying out these certain bills. And really, that is my concern on this amendment. That's why I feel very uncomfortable with it. Maybe there would be a way to change it, so maybe the end of a fiscal year. But I think doing this on a monthly basis is dangerous and could leave us in the end short on, number one, providing appropriations for the needed agencies, as well as not, not, how would you say, being financially prudent. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Cavill. Senator Tenorio?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I've just got a question. We started out this, the committee of the whole with some rules that dealt with how we're going to allow amendments to the budget, and so my question is just to clarify, is this permissible, given that it changes a previous law and it sets out the priorities on the 2% set aside without the benefit of the public hearing? I just want to be clear about how, you know, we were going to be able to move other amendments similarly. So is this permissible here?
Yes, I ruled this one permissible because the original bill that was submitted by the governor had the allowable payments in there already, and he's just rearranging that, he's not adding anything different. So in that respect, I would say that it is certainly in line with what was already in the bill, what we had the public hearing on, in terms of what's to be paid, and he's just prioritizing what has been listed before.
So in that case, I'm going to make an amendment then to change the order from, the first will be all the people of Guam, which is number two, and then we go to our public employees, and then to the following items, three and four, for the reason that the, all of our people who are owed tax refunds, EITC, and COLA, and the oldest obligations being first, I have no problem with, but all the people of Guam, whether a government employee or private sector, are owed these money. So we need to take care of all the people of Guam, in my opinion. We need to take care of all of the employees, of course, and I'm not, the danger in doing this, Mr. Chairman, is that you really start to pit one class of employee against another. And the way it was already written is, in the existing law, was adequate for me, but I think we need to take care of all the people of Guam first, and then, you know, our government employees know that they're going to get their monies in their due course, but I think the priorities need to be placed in the proper order. So I want to place number two as number one, reordering it from money to individual citizens, and then to the public employees, and therefore, and so on.
Okay. There's an amendment to the amendment by Senator Tenorio, and it would just change the position of priority of one and two. Two becomes one, and one becomes two. Okay? So on that amendment, to the amendment? All right? Just a brief recess then. The committee of the whole is back from a short recess. Senator Tenorio, you had the floor.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I just want to point out the amendment here, and I'd like to speak on the main motion before we close if this amendment fails, is I really want to try to take care of all the people of Guam, you know, and many of those people that are the people of Guam are also government employees, who are owed this income tax returns, for which you've been the champion in many ways, in trying to make sure that those monies get allocated to them, not just year by year, but also in the bonds, and so is many of the other members of this body. So I want to make sure that we prioritize all the people of Guam before we start to say, you know, we're going to take care of the public employees. Because, you know, look, those public employees have jobs, they're getting their income. There are many people in our community who do not have those jobs, and are relying on the income of their tax returns, EITC, and COLA, to be able to make it day by day. So really, frankly, let's take care of all the people of Guam. At least, if we're going to move this amendment, let's take care of all the people of Guam before we start, you know, taking care of those back due payments for our public employees, which are definitely deserved, we all understand. Thank you.
Okay. So is there an objection to the amendment by Senator Tenorio? Okay. All right. So on the amendment by Senator Tenorio, and that would just to reverse the order of one and two, where two becomes one and one becomes two, all in favor of that amendment? Oh, Senator Palacios, you want a clarification?
I'm very, of course, I, when it says the judgment, I guess now that the number two becomes number one, does that judgment now still cover the judgment that now favors this government, just government of Guam employees with respect to Civil Service Commission claims?
I would defer that question to the author. Would you like, before we vote on that, would you like him to yield to that question?
Yes, sir, because I, you know, because we really have to settle those judgments that are 10 years old, 15 years old.
All right.
So I just want to know whether that's still covered.
Okay.
Despite the reversal.
Okay. Okay. Senator Rector? There was a point of inquiry by Senator Palacios prior to the call and the vote. In line, in numeral two, priority two, you have tax refunds or judgments, and his question was basically, was it your intention then that the word judgments there would cover judgments by civil service commission, judgments that have been awarded to public employees? Is that inclusive?
You're talking about in priority two.
Yes.
Well, CSC and other judgments would have been for public employees, because the only rule for public employees would have been in, covered in number one.
Okay, that's clear.
So judgment is not restricted to the public employees?
No, no. Judgments would have been, in number two, I was referring to like lawsuits against the government, et cetera, et cetera.
All right. So Senator Palacios?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. No. You can't make an amendment to the amendment. No. That's correct. That's correct. Yeah. Okay. So on the amendment by Senator Tenorio, there was an objection. I'm going to call for a vote on the amendment by Senator Tenorio to change the order of priority, and one becomes number two, and two becomes number one. All in favor of that amendment? Please raise your hand. Amendment fails. Senator Tenorio on the main motion.
Yeah, right.
Or the main amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I want to thank you for the opportunity to continue the discussion. You know, I was pointing out, actually with a colleague of mine, and here in the session, about number four, for-profit vendors, the oldest obligations being paid first. You know, we, I don't understand maybe why the author would place the companies and the private sector who have employees that provide services to all of the government. And then number three, monies owed to nonprofit organizations, the sanctuary, or oasis, or, you know, all those people who provide those services to our community that we as a government don't do ourself last. You know, I really, I have to join in the expression of disappointment and major concern about putting nonprofit organizations that do work for this government, really, that take, that do God's work, to be able to take care of people who really need it, and we have many of them, Mr. Chairman, who do that for our government, and we put the nonprofit next to last. And all these people who take care of our manomkul, those people who have disabilities and challenges in our community, who don't, you know, they're robbing Peter to pay Paul to try to get through every single day, we put them second to last at the end of this series of priorities, and getting money to take care of these basic things, to pay their employees whatever wages that they get paid, or to be able to take care of the obligations that they got. I know some vendors of this government, which are nonprofit, not, I'm sorry, for-profit, who are indebted millions and millions of dollars, just like our tax recipients, our income tax recipients, like you know, who call you and me and everyone else in this hall, who try to get money. But the same for-profit who are in the last of the list are still taking care of feeding our children right now. And the same thing is true for those nonprofit organizations. You know, as I said earlier, you pit one category, a class of debtor, against another when you do this kind of thing. There's already a setup in the existing law that lays out how this process works. You know, I have to join in the objections to this amendment, Mr. Chairman, because I think, you know, I really feel for the people that owe this money, and I applaud the fact that we're setting aside 2%. But I can't go along with this, and I don't support it. So this is my seat, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator Tenorio. Senator Espodan and Senator Guthers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I also raise an objection to this amendment, and, you know, I do take into consideration, and part of the objection is based upon what the previous speakers have talked about in their objection to the amendment. But my objection is more based on the reality and the, whether this is actually doable. I mean, the way this reads, and I just don't want to fool anybody out there, thinking that, oh, yes, we're going to do this, and we're going to do that, when in essence, we really can't do anything in terms of what this amendment purports to do. Because if you take a look at it, it says that the last day of each month, revenue tax will deposit 2% of all unappropriated general fund revenues collected in excess of appropriations for that month into a deficit. You know, bottom line is, we're saying that we're determining, I would imagine, or we're setting policy right now, that we're going to go on a straight-line basis, and that we're going to divide the total budget, the appropriations, by 12. And every month, that's going to be, you know, that's going to be the monthly appropriation for the government. But it doesn't work that way, right? Some months are heavier than others in terms of collections, some are slower than others, and where we don't meet certain revenues, right? So bottom line is, I mean, because if you think about it, during the month of March and during the month of April, when taxes are due, you know, by corporations, and in April by individuals, those are our heaviest months. Those will exceed that 1/12 allocation if we are indeed going on a 1/12 basis per month, you know, per year. But in reality, what this is saying is that, you know, 2% of all unappropriated general fund revenues. Now, really, what we need to do is get to that point where we, the unappropriated amount will be anything over $540 million, right? So we can't, beginning of the fiscal year, start saying that, well, there's a lot of money coming in for this month, but we still haven't reached that 540, because our obligation really is $540 million, at least according to this budget. So until we collect that much, there is no general fund deficit reduction fund, because we still have to make sure that our government runs according to how we have determined by this budget. So in essence, I have to object on the basis is that we're operating on this amendment on a false pretense, right? Unless we right now discuss for a fact that we are going to go down a straight-line policy of taking each month, or taking total revenues, dividing it by 12, and that will be the allocation per month. The danger that we go down that road, if we go down that road, is that if we do not collect the total amount of 540 over the full 12 months, then we would have shortchanged the operations of this government. And that's the bottom line. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Espodan. Senator Guthers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to go back to the original listing of the four areas of priority, and I have an amendment. My first amendment is to eliminate priority item one.
Okay.
Then eliminate priority item three, and eliminate priority item four, so that the priority would be worded as follows. Money owed to individual citizens, inclusive of public employees, and to for-profit and nonprofit organizations for unpaid EITC, COLA, tax refunds, judgments, or for services rendered with the oldest obligation being paid first.
I'm going to ask that that be placed in writing, so I'm just going to ask for a short recess.
Okay.
While you place that in writing.
Thank you.
The committee of the whole is back in session. When we broke for the purpose of having Senator Guthers put her amendment in writing, and basically, her amendment is to amend Senator Rector's amendment by striking, basically, the entire amendment of one, two, three, and four, and substituting the language that she's presented in place of one, two, three, and four.
Basically, it simply states, in terms of the priority, money owed to individual citizens, public employees, vendors, and nonprofit organizations for unpaid EITC, COLA, tax refunds, judgments, or services rendered to the government with the oldest obligation So in other words, the oldest obligation shall be paid first with this amendment.
The committee of the whole is back in session. When we broke for the purpose of having Senator Guthers put her amendment in writing, and basically, her amendment is to amend Senator Rector's amendment by striking, basically, the entire amendment of one, two, three, and four, and substituting the language that she's presented in place of one, two, three, and four.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Basically, it simply states, in terms of the priority, money owed to individual citizens, public employees, vendors, and nonprofit organizations for unpaid EITC, COLA, tax refunds, judgments, or services rendered with the oldest obligation being paid first.
Senator Calvo on the Guthers amendment to the Rector amendment?
Yeah, and it may be inadvertent, but if you read the language, because everything is put together here, when you're talking about the oldest obligation being the first, just looking at, you know, some of the court cases, really, I think the oldest obligations would be the COLA settlement, or, not the COLA settlement, but there is an amount old And that being the case, I may be wrong, I don't think there's any tax refunds that are old for are old for that prior period in the 90s, but looking at the language of this, then I would suppose the outcome would be then the COLA and potentially the EITC. And again, I stand to be corrected, but I guess I'm going to ask the author of the amendment, based on what is written here, and based on the limited memory that I have of what is old in tax refunds and obligations, is that the intent to try to get the COLA?
No.
And the EITC?
What, Mr. Chairman, what the intent is, the original amendment was to try to find a way to accumulate monies to pay past due obligations. I believe that's the intent of this original amendment that was offered by our colleague, Senator Rector. And all this does is simply say, what we pay is what's old, the oldest.
Mm-hmm.
It's like you, if you owe money, you pay your oldest obligation first, and you try to whittle it down to make it current. So, that's all. And I have no idea what the oldest obligations are of this government, but I'm sure there are plenty obligations of unpaid IOUs of the government of Guam. So, this would simply say that you pay your oldest one first, and you whittle it down until it becomes current. So, that's the intent. It's not specific to any particular category.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Thank you very much, Senator Calvo. Any other comments on the, Senator Uggan, on the Guthers amendment?
Thank you very much, Mrs. Speaker. Just a quick question, and I guess because it's an inquiry that has come in, an individual or several individuals, couple of individuals, called me in regards to the definition of COLA. And I know that the cost of living adjustment is already incorporated on an annualized basis to all of the retirees. Now, with the COLA judgment settlement, though the principal amounts owed to the beneficiaries and the recipients have been paid out, the interest now remains outstanding. Now, the question that I have is, could the definition of COLA constitute and be inclusive of interest due? If I can pose that question to the sponsor of the amendment, please, Mrs. Speaker?
Senator Guthers, will you yield to that question?
That, I'm feeling like the mother of COLA. I'm not the mother of COLA. Mrs. Nelson's the mother of COLA. But it simply means that whatever we owe, we pay the oldest obligation first. And I would think that, yes, that would be eligible for a payment, but it would have to be within the chronological order of what's oldest and moving forward down to current. So...
Okay. Thank you, Senator Guthers. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator. Any other comments on the Guthers amendment? Any objection to the Guthers amendment? Did you want to close? Yes. You may close.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. You know, originally, I didn't think of doing this, but with all the discussion that occurred, I thought that maybe there's a way we can address this. This government owes a lot of money. We've always owed money, and it's no sin for government to owe money. The sin is not paying what we owe in an orderly, systematic fashion. And I think that's what really this initial amendment intended to do, is find a way to whittle down these obligations. I do want to extend some kind of recognition to the administration, because they have begun paying obligations. And I want to also commend Bertha Duenez for her leadership in finding a mechanism to do this, because she has really made a difference in helping to make this possible. But this amendment overall would provide a statement of commitment, certainly by this legislature, that we recognize these obligations, and they must be paid, and this is the fashion in which we would like to see these obligations paid, through public policy. We're setting a public policy direction on how this should be paid. Thank you very much.
Okay. Senator Palacios?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, of course, this will be adopted. Now, how does one go about filing for a claim? With DOA or with the agency that, in the case of, for example, the fire department? File it with the chief or with DOA, which is line agency? And how, what is the process? I'm just inquiring for the purpose of the listening.
I would think, first of course, you have to identify your claim. It has to be...
Okay.
Valid. It has to be adjudicated.
Yes, sir.
And then, you would probably file it with, my guess is, the Department of Administration, which is charged with the, for example, with the claims fund and making payments on those. So, this would be probably through administration. They work it through the system, and then approve it for payment. That's, unless somebody else outlines any specific process for payment out of this fund, at this time, I'm just assuming that it gets through the administration, and Department of Administration is the agency tasked with handling government payables.
Sir, does this section apply to, for example, University of Guam or GMH?
Again, this is for all, it says, all prior year obligations of the government of Guam. That was the enabling legislation. So, they are indeed part of the government of Guam, so perhaps that's more aptly answered by our legal counsel, but...
Okay. So, actually, it would be the government of Guam that will settle those claims against UOG, claims against the fire department or GMH?
That is, if there's no existing mechanism...
Okay.
...for settling of those claims.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Senator Guthers, did you want to just close on your?
I just have one question. Just one question, Mr. Chairman. If we added one sentence that said, "The Department of Administration shall establish and maintain a master registry of prior year obligations for purposes of this section," would that work?
That'll be helpful.
May I amend my amendment? Can someone amend my amendment to say that?
No, because your amendment is an amendment to an amendment. So, we would pass your amendment...
Or then add it.
And then, we could have an amendment to the amendment as amended. Okay? And I know that my, so, on the Guthers amendment, any objection to the Guthers amendment to Senator Rector's amendment? No? Senator Ada?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this is getting a little confusing here, because the initial amendment was actually to prioritize. This gets paid first, that second, and all that. Now, the amendment really does away with this order of priority, but rather creates a, identifies what is to be paid, and the only prioritization that is given within this group is that whichever has the oldest due date on it is the first one to be paid, whether it be a, um, a public employee, whether it be an individual citizen, whoever it is within this group, whoever's got the oldest date, he gets paid first. So, there's, so I guess that priority is actually set by this qualifier here, that it'll be paid with the, according to the oldest obligation, that the oldest obligation will be paid first.
That's correct.
So, if we were to adopt the Guthers amendment, you would then have to really gut, it doesn't say here that we're deleting this one, two, three, and four...
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
I didn't say that.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Senator Guthers? Yeah, she, yeah. She didn't write it out. I apologize.
I didn't see that verbal statement that she made.
And we don't blame you for not seeing that verbal portion of the amendment. But the amendment was to replace one, two, three, and four with this following language. So, you are correct in your assessment. No matter what, these are the categories of prior year obligations, and it's the oldest one that gets paid first among all the categories. Okay?
Okay.
All right. On the Guthers amendment, any objection? No objections? The amendment carries. Senator Guthers? All right. Senator Guthers, on the Rector amendment as amended? Yes? Okay.
It simply adds the language after the section, at the end of the section that we just passed. It says, "The Department of Administration shall establish and maintain a registry of past due obligations of the government."
Okay.
Period.
On that amendment to the Rector amendment as amended? No objections? That amendment carries. We'll, that concludes the discussion on Section 5. Would like to call for, or, I'm sorry. Yes. Okay. All right. That's correct. That's correct. Section, but Senator Rector, did you want to close on the amendment, on the section as amended?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Now, I want to make sure we understand where we're at at this point. I proposed an amendment, which has now been amended twice. So, now, we haven't actually closed on the amended amendment yet, have we?
Section 5 is in the bill. We amended Section 5.
Right.
The first amendment to Section 5 was, that was presented, was your amendment, which had priority one, two, three, four, five.
Correct.
During the discussion of your amendment, Senator Tenorio made an amendment to your amendment to reverse one and two. That amendment failed. We continued discussion on your amendment then with one, two, three, four, five existing. Senator Guthers then made an amendment to your amendment to strike one, two, three, four, five, and replace those sections with her language. That was approved. That amendment carried. So, the first paragraph of your amendment, plus Senator Guthers', is now the Rector amendment as amended. Senator Guthers then made another amendment to require the Department of Administration to keep a registry of the prior year obligations. That was appended to the amendment as amended. So, the amendment that is now, has been accepted by the body, is your amendment, which is the paragraph one, incorporating Senator Guthers' amendment, saying the oldest one gets paid first, and the Department of Administration keeps the registry. So, that has been accepted by the body. That's correct. So, the, so your amendment with incorporating Senator Guthers' two amendments is now before the body. That's correct. Yes.
Because the way you'd state it, it is like it had already passed, the amended amendment.
Oh, no. I'm sorry. I apologize.
Okay. So, now, I am closing on the, my amendment as amended.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. Boy, it's hard saying the amended amendment for me this morning, for some reason. Yes, once again, like, you know, great minds in this room, like, come together and make good amendments better. And I appreciate the input of my colleague from Manila, and making this a better amendment. Yes, you know, first off, before I go on, Public Law 30-30 has very strong disclosure language in it, and I would like to remind my colleagues that if, according to 30-30, if there's any financial interest of their spouses, adopted or natural dependent children's parents, parents-in-law, siblings, or siblings-in-law, that have an ownership in any business, et cetera, et cetera, on any company that might have an obligation of GOV Guam, they need to disclose in writing prior to the vote. And I just want to remind all of my colleagues of that language, as they have continually reminded me of conflict enders. I have disclosed the financial in writing to the speaker prior to this. So, just a little reminder to my friends out there, so that they don't get in trouble. Now, going back to this, you know, the reason I put this amendment in is because I have public employees constantly going to, coming to me, and we know that there's these long outstanding debts to people. People have trouble getting by, whereas every time I've heard the business community come to me, quote-unquote, "business community," it's a little hard to group every business on island into one phrase, but every time they have testified as such to the legislature, saying that anything that affects them will cause them all to go out of business, has proven to be false. As a matter of fact, I think if we go back and look at the testimony in the committee reports, when this body increased the minimum wage, we will see that they said that everything is going to, they're going to all go out of business, they're going to have to fire all their employees, and the sky will fall if the minimum wage increased, and yet, the minimum wage increased, they didn't let go any of their employees. As a matter of fact, there was no substantial reduction whatsoever, even an increase in certain categories of employees when it came to that. So, that's why I prioritized it the way it is. In this government, I believe that we should deal with taking care of the people first. And I know that might seem like a biased concept to somebody, but if we're going to say people first, then people first. Not organizations, not businesses, people. The people that get up every day and put food on the table for their children, the people that get up every day and go to work, the people that go to school and serve on school boards, the people that go to fiestas and go to matas, people. And that's why I came with the amendment. That being said, I'll accept the amendment as it is, and I encourage all my colleagues to vote for the amended amendment. Thank you very much.
Okay. On the Rector amendment as amended, any objections? There is an objection? All right. I'm going to call for a vote then. All in favor of the Rector amendment, please raise your hand.
Eight with you.
Seven. Amendment fails. We will, yes. We will now call for a recess until 2:00 P.M. We concluded our discussion this morning on Section 5, on page 139 of the miscellaneous provisions, and will now go to Section 6. Section 6 is retirement option for GOV Guam employees. Any comments or? This is basically allowing the departments and agencies who owe money to the retirement fund to make whole the contributions to the retirement fund, and then allow the individual employee to retire. In the past, I believe what happened is that the retirement fund would not allow any employee in an agency who was behind on payment remittance of retirement fund contributions, even if they paid for that single employee. And this allows the member now, who is eligible for retirement, may retire upon the complete remittance of his individual outstanding contributions to the fund. And so, this is because we still have a couple of agencies that have not completely fulfilled their promissory note to the retirement fund. And this was, provision was first placed in here, I think, after a court case, and a ruling on a court case with regards to retirement fund contributions by the government of Guam and the individual employee. So, on Section 6, I have Senator Uggan. He wanted to comment.
Please, thank you very much, Mrs. Speaker. I want to thank you and the committee for reinserting this and retaining it in the budget process. I don't know if eventually it should be codified, but I think this particular provision, Mr. Speaker, really has assisted many of our people in terms of being able to move in the direction of retiring. I know of a few individuals, just very few, who apparently were held up at Guam War Hospital because their remittances had not been completed to the retirement fund. But because of the recent bomb proceeds, and then also because of this particular provision in law, in this fiscal year, it has allowed them to initiate, re-initiate their processing for retirement. So, I just wanted to highlight that, that is definitely very supportive of a number of individuals. And also, I think when you're looking at, Mr. Speaker, at budgetary relief, once an individual retires, let's say at step eight or step nine, and that position is refilled at step one or step two, it does result in at least a net gain for that particular position of anywhere from 30 to 35 percent of what the salary was for that individual. So, it allows, provides for that flexibility for the department or agency to be able to recruit and refill that position, should it be necessary. So, I just wanted to speak on behalf of that. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Uggan. And again... And again, this, these are main, I think this provision was first put in here in reference to the promissory note by the Department of Education and the Guam Memorial Hospital. So, that's what it's intended to allow the retirees, or individuals to retire there, even though the hospital has not fully paid its contributions, as long as they pay it for that individual employee. So, any other comments on this section? If not, we'll then proceed to Section 7. Section 7 is a provision that was in a prior budget bill also. It allows volunteer donations for Skinner Plaza, Plaza de España, and the Guam Congress Building. And it vests the executive director, who may receive donations. These facilities are under the purview of the Guam Legislature. Senator Espodan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, just out of curiosity, I mean, you said that this was in a previous bill, uh, budget bill, and I remember it. Can you tell us, can you tell, tell this body, have we received anything and how much we have received?
You know, I couldn't tell you. The Committee on Rules would probably be, or the Speaker may have information on any donations received by the legislature under this provision for Skinner Plaza, Plaza de España, the Guam Congress Building. Senator Espodan, did you want the dollar amount, or did you just want to know if we've received any?
Well, I would like to know the dollar amount.
Okay.
And, and because then, the, I guess the, the train of thought is that, you know, first of all, we'd like, once we find out the dollar amount, it'd be nice to know what we're doing with that money in terms of addressing the issues at Skinner Plaza, Plaza de España, and Guam Congress Building.
All right. I'll just do a short recess. I think the Speaker has that readily available.
Thank you.
So, just a short recess while the Speaker gets the information.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Oh, no, no, no. We're not, we're not gonna take it away. Thank you very much. The legislature's back in session. Senator Espodan, I, on Section 7?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. The, the information that was gotten by the Speaker, again, basically to represent to everybody out there, we have not received really any, any donations. But, again, I think we have to remain optimistic, and maybe, maybe people just don't know that they have the ability to help restore the Plaza de España and the Skinner Plaza and the Guam Congress Building. So, I, I just, I was just a point of information. And I appreciate the efforts of the Speaker. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Espodan. Any other comments on Section 7? If not, we'll then proceed to Section 8, Temporary Employment of Retired Corrections Officers. Any comments on this section? Senator Palacios? Section 8, I'm sorry.
Just technical, Mr. Chairman, and this, and that is to make it the same with the rest of the subsequent section. And that's on line 12, at the end of, say, Supervisor 1, comma, and then at, and below, only at step 1. That should be the insertion.
Okay.
So that it is consistent with the rest of the section following that, on the same language.
And below.
And below, comma, only, only at step 1.
And below.
If you read, for example, for example, if you read, uh...
Line 22.
Line 22, it'd be, yeah, it would be the same, like that.
Right.
So, and below, comma, only at step 1.
Okay, yes.
So that that's consistent.
Okay.
That's, that's the only comment on that.
Right. Okay. On that amendment by Senator Palacios, no objections. That amendment carries. Senator Rector.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm, I'm gonna make these on, on the next few amendments. And we have, I have an amendment in writing coming out. I'm just waiting for copies, even as we speak. But let me talk about all of these. And I, and I understand why the legislature did this. I, I believe this was in the last budget bill as well. These temporary employment of retired police officers and correction officers were in as well. And the, the concept, and I'm sure my, my colleagues will correct me if I'm wrong, but the concept is, my understanding, is that because we have lots of people deployed overseas that, in military service, that we're able to go back and hire temporary people to fill the gaps while they're away. Now, that seems like a, a temporary solution to not a temporary problem. We have, always we have people deployed. We are not, this, this war isn't gonna end tomorrow. Even if the, even if the war in Iraq ends tomorrow, which we know it isn't, there, all the troops in Iraq are gonna be transferred to Afghanistan. The President said so. So, we know that this isn't gonna end this year. It's not gonna end next year. If we're lucky, it'll end in five years. Well, we are, even as we speak, even if all of these folks were back in island and back in service, we're still short for customs officers, we're still short for retired police, we're still short for police officers, we're short for corrections officers, we're short of all of these people. And we know that by looking at the overtime ranks and overtime dollars. I know in the fire department, they're sending out, out trucks below staffing patterns, right? And, and violation of rules and regs, and making it unsafe for these folks. We have to quit putting Band-Aids on cancer, Mr. Chair. And what we need to do is start hiring people and building up the ranks of the classified service once again. We need to hire these young employees and get them through the training process, hire them as step 1, as, as we're talking about doing, and start building the institutional knowledge that's gonna make them really productive police officers in five years, and really productive firefighters in five years. You know, as much as, as I appreciate our retired police officers and, and firefighters, you know, there used to be a provision in, in our retirement law that allowed these folks to retire at 20 years of service. And there's a reason. Both of these are, are highly physical jobs. And they're young men's professions, realistically. Now, I'm not saying that our old guys can't keep up, because I know they do. They work out continually. But there gets to be a certain point, and there gets to be a certain point where all the training in the world isn't gonna keep you through it. And so, what we need to do is come up with permanent solutions and start hiring permanent classified employees, instead of putting these Band-Aids on the cancer. And at some point in the very near future, the copies are being made for amendment to all these sections. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator Rector. Senator Ogden, did you have your hand up?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, just to, to make, I wanted to provide some general comments on Section 8, and I guess in this particular case, it would be applicable to the subsequent sections. And I know that the previous speaker had alluded to the possibility of, why don't we incorporate a permanent fix to this situation? Well, you know, when, when you look at budgetary considerations and some of the challenges that our government, I think we're very fortunate that, in this case, that we're realizing a slightly adjusted upward revenue base, based on the budget, and then in subsequent fiscal years, because of the military buildup and some of the activities, that eventually we'll have additional resources. But there was a time in this government where some of us, in this legislature, with the exception of myself in the last legislature, had to make some very challenging decisions, Mr. Speaker. And one of those difficult decisions was to be able to allow as much flexibility within these law enforcement entities, so that if, in fact, absent one, or five, or 10 individuals who are called up for military deployments, which, by the way, ESGR, federal regs, federal laws, do not allow us to make it voluntary in nature. So, basically, they get their federal orders, they need to go deploy, or they need to be activated to carry out certain missions or certain deployments. Now, based on that premise, the anticipation wa, is that, or was that, these military US armed forces personnel, regardless as to what entity they're, they're a part of, we're gonna be absent for a short period of time. In some cases, four months. In some, other cases, up to 12 months. And prior to last year, it extended as far out as 18 months for individualized deployments. In order to try to offset that, one of the mechanisms, Mr. Speaker, that was implemented was this particular provision, to allow these law enforcement entities so that they, they do not have, they do not continue to operate without a uniform personnel in that particular department, without having to go out and recruit, replace that individual, and then obviously find out that, that when the individual returns, that perhaps the resources are just as limited, if not even more limited, to support the operation and the compensation of that law enforcement official. So, in order to try to provide a temporary solution to this situation, these provisions were implemented. And I believe that we have seen it work over the course of the past several years. The agencies that have applied it by virtue of being able to bring back retired personnel, uniformed officers, and it's specific in nature where it allows the flexibility for retired uniformed personnel, whether they in the Guam Police Department, the corrections, firefighters, one fire department, or other law enforcement entities, customs and quarantine, they would be able to bring these uniformed retired personnel back into the system so that, in fact, they can fulfill that responsibility of that one officer that has gone for an extended period of time for deployment. Why this mechanism? Because allowing the flexibility to pull back retired uniformed personnel, law enforcement personnel, did not require an outright OJT in terms of training these particular individuals, and it allows for these individuals to step right in and carry out their respective responsibilities. Well, that's the nature of the flexibility that was provided. And I believe that in the last eight, seven or eight years, since the initial implementation of this, that it has worked well. And it wa, it was a budgetary consideration in terms of being able to provide the agency flexibility, and knowing full well what the previous speaker had shared with us, that we're short anyways, why don't we allow for the initial recruitment? I think a lot of that had to be, had to de, deal directly with the finances of the government over the course of the past several years. Yes, Guam Police Department is now recruiting and will be hiring up to 14 uniformed police officers, based on the additional funds coming in from the federal COPS program. Some of these other agencies perhaps may have additional flexibility that you have incorporated, Mr. Speaker, in terms of... Mrs. Speaker, in terms of increasing their budgetary allocation and flexibility so that they can recruit additional personnel. But aside from that, I believe that this is a provision that has supported our law enforcement agencies over the course of the past six or seven years. And I think that it's a temporary fix for a temporary situation that would address being able to backfill a uniformed personnel rather than recruiting full-time, which we all know there is a requirement for and there is a need for out in the community. But if, in fact, the resources, the financial resources and budget constraints continues to impact this government, then we need to judiciously plan accordingly. And I think that's one of the things that has been done over the course of the past several years. I think there's another aspect, Mrs. Speaker, that financially, that reinforces the commitment to the law enforcement, and that is the 10% increment across the board that was implemented this fiscal year as the first year out of four years. That shows a direct commitment to our law enforcement entities. And it's those tools and these mechanisms and these provisions that I think continue, need to be in place so that, in fact, there's some flexibility incorporated into the process and we don't arbitrarily leave a law enforcement agency hurting for manpower when, in fact, we have resources out there, people resources out there. I just wanted to add that comment. Thank you very much, Mrs. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Ogun. Any other comments on Section 8? Senator Palacios?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Chairman, of course, I share the sentiments of the author of the amendment with respect to having maybe additional permanent positions for law enforcement entities. And I think the provision of Section 8 and even Section 9 and Section 10 actually allows only for the temporary hiring to hire permanent positions to fill in for intermittent absence of deployed personnel of the law enforcement entity. It's gonna be a complicated matter because under the current provisions, actually, who you hire depends on who's absent. And so, but if you're gonna hire a permanent position to sort of fill in because the, on the argument that at any one time, at any one time anyway, the government of Guam is gonna have deployed personnel from the law enforcement community of about 50. But what are the, when you're gonna hire a permanent position in anticipation of that at what rank and at what, even at Step 1? See, that is the complication here to administer that. But with the current provision, if a sergeant is at Step 10, is deployed, then you know that that's, that much money is available from that position to hire temporary, to fill that position, not necessarily at Sergeant 1 and maybe at P.O. 3. Now, another complication is that if a lieutenant or a captain is deployed, you cannot use, you cannot hire a retiree at a rank higher than Sergeant 1. But under the proposed amendment, are we gonna hire them or allow for additional permanent position of lieutenant in anticipation of lieutenant and captains being deployed? See, there's no flexibility once you do that. I understand that these deployed personnel are still coming back, but some of these deployed personnel, they will have on their name money appropriated to their position, but maybe for some reason because they exhaust their leave, they're not able to use up all the money appropriated for their respective position. And then the chief of police would be allowed then, or the Department of Corrections, to utilize that to hire ready-made, ready-to-serv retirees to just slide in and go into the field. And this is just for the rank and file, just for the working level, and that's the limitation of this. And I think that I continue, I mean, I support the continued retention of this provision. That's, because it's simple and it's straightforward and it's predictable. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator Palacios. Senator Guthers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, some of us in this room in past lives had the opportunity to serve in law enforcement organizations. And I'm among them, Mr. Chairman. And one of my biggest heartaches as the Director of Public Safety, which had purview of both the fire and police service, and later as the First Acting Chief of the Guam Police Department, was the deployments of our uniformed personnel for their annual military training. And usually that happened at the same time during the summer. We'd lose between 100 and 150 officers at one time during the summer so they could go do their annual training off island. It was very difficult for us to cover our beats and meet our responsibilities in the fire service and in the police service. I wish I would've had the provisions that we're discussing now in operation at that time, where I could've brought in on a temporary basis very skilled, retired, particularly recently retired firefighters and police officers to help fill the gaps. Now, although there may be concerns that we're having to resort to this because of longer deployments by our military reservists and guards persons, nevertheless, this mechanism has really saved the Guam Police Department, the Guam Fire Department, the Department of Corrections, and other agencies of the government with law enforcement duties. Without these, this provision that we're talking about now having been in place in the past budgets, I dare say these departments of our government would have failed, miserably failed us in providing services to the community in these critical public safety areas. Now, of course, we'd love to hire people if we had the resources to do it. And things are getting better with the stimulus money from the President. The Police Department announced that it expected to hire 20 new police officers with federal stimulus money for at least three years. And I think the Corrections folks are gonna do something similar in the fire. But that's federal money. Let me ask you, Mr. Chairman, do we have additional money to hire more people now in this government? In adequate numbers?
No.
We do not. Things may change in the next couple of years, we may have more revenues available, but right now, we don't. So first, I want to thank all of those retired law enforcement officers that have come to the rescue of this government and helped us over the last couple of years fill in these gaps. And I encourage them to do the same thing should this pass, this amendment's pass this coming year. I also want to commend the retired teachers for doing the same thing. Our public school system would be in big trouble if our certified retired teachers weren't willing to come back and help. Now, hopefully someday, we won't need them if the School of Education graduates enough folks. But right now, we do need them. And we need our retired nurses, too. So those are just my thoughts, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Guthers. Any other comments on Sections 8? No further comment? No further amendments? All right. We'll proceed then to Section 9, which is the same provision referencing the Guam Police Department. Senator Rector and then Senator Palacios.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I've heard that this, that we have lots of people in these positions and they're serving time. Do we have, not serving time, that sounds like they're in prison, but they're, we have retirees coming back filling these roles. Do we have in the Committee Report, before I start searching through that massive document, actual numbers of who and what are filling these positions in the last fiscal year? Has this really worked? Do we have proof of it?
No, I don't have, I don't recall anything in the Committee Report on statistics referencing retired police officers who have come back into the service to take the place of individuals who have been deployed.
What about firefighters? Do we have that stats?
No, I don't have those stats either. Those were not, they were not, they were not discussed, actually, in the, in the public hearing. The desire to continue to have that option was voiced, but they did not provide statistics saying how many had actually been employed under these provisions.
You see, as we've gone through this, we've all talked about performance-based budgeting. And we've talked about how important it is to put things in the budget that we actually know work and that to put provisions in to analyze the new things that we're doing to find out if they work. So at this point, seeing as we're in committee of the whole, can I wait till, or get information? Can we table these three provisions? Can I ask to table these three provisions till we get some sort of report back that says these things have actually worked, because it's been in the law before? As seen as we don't have any numbers whatsoever and there's nothing in the Committee Report that says so?
We can certainly place the call. I'll direct my staff. Well, we'll continue the discussion. We can come back if there may be, based upon the information we get back, there may be further action that any member of those body wishes to take on these provisions, and we'll allow them to come back. But we will place those calls, ask the respective chiefs of these divisions how many individuals have actually been employed under these provisions.
Thank you.
Senator, as a matter of fact, let me ask the oversight chairs of these departments to call.
Just a point of information.
They may respond quicker to you than me.
Yeah, just a point of information, Mr. Speaker. I believe it was sometime in May, or if not April, BBMR representative, I believe that there was one central clearinghouse that collected this data, and they were giving us a breakdown as to exactly how many individuals have been deployed. So I don't know if it's BBMR, I may be mistaken, but I believe there was one central point.
No, we know how many people have been, we know how many people have been, are deployed. We don't know how many have been hired to replace them under these provisions. And you think that's the information you're requesting, Senator Rector?
Correct.
Okay.
But as long as we're gonna continue to discuss these provisions, and I would like to talk on it, seeing as I still have the floor.
We're emailing our staff right now to ask them to call the different chiefs and ask them for this information. But we'll continue the discussion.
Okay. Then if we're continuing the discussion, let me continue.
Okay, so we're on Section 9.
Section 9, Temporary Employment of Retired Police Officers. And yes, once again, I'll reiterate how important it is to start hiring fully classified employees to go back into the system and start building these resources that people at Guam need. Now, once again, we've talked, I've heard lots of discussions about fiscal hardship and the government's difficulty with revenue. But remember, this, that's our difficulty. It's this legislature's difficulty. We're the ones that decide what the revenue of the government is. We're the ones that set the priority for what the government is. And to use it as an excuse because we don't have the political will to stand up and generate new revenue and to start re-appropriating money in our society so those who can most afford to pay, pay their fair share, so that we can have fully classified police officers, so that all of our families are protected, so that we can have a full complement of correction officers, so that all of our prisoners are treated fairly and with dignity and respect, and so that our current correction officers aren't doing double shifts, which some of them are. I mean, imagine, if you will, if you were working till midnight and your family's expecting you home, and then your replacement doesn't show up, and so you have to work a whole another eight-hour shift. I mean, I have trouble imagining that. If I'm a half hour late, my wife starts chewing me a new one, and we don't even have kids. I mean, I can only imagine the difficulty that causes on families and on parents. It's got to be an incredible thing. We need to hire the appropriate replacements. We need to make the tough decisions as a body as to what the priorities of this government are. I know, like in the past, people have sat there and said, oh, our priorities are health, safety, and education. But even still, we're not prioritizing. I mean, if that's the priority of this government, then we've done a darn poor job of it. Because once again, we are patching a leaky dike like the little boy in Holland with one finger, instead of like going out and doing a systematic repair so that that dike protects all of our families, and that's what police officers do. So therefore, I move to delete Section 9. Thank you.
All right. On the motion to delete Section 9, I see Senator Tenorio's hand up, okay? And Senator Palacios. So Senator Tenorio, you recognize on the motion to delete Section 9?
Needless to say, I object. I am the author of this original amendment, and it's been expanded to several different agencies. And the reason for it is the statements that were made by my colleagues here previously in the previous section. The whole idea of this, Mr. Chairperson, is this. You have retired members of our community who have come from the ranks of Corrections, police, fire, et cetera. And they have the capability to come back to work, and they have the knowledge, they have the experience. And not only that, frankly, they have the connections throughout the community to be able to get a lot of things done that a new police officer, in some cases, takes years to do. He establishes the rapport with these people so that they know that he's an upstanding, fair, and just person. The police officers that need to fill these positions, they need to be permanent, no doubt. What we're talking about is the enabling of these agencies to bring in people on a temporary basis to fill those positions. And we're not talking about high-level positions either, we're not talking about captains and majors. We're talking about people who actually are integrated and interwoven within our community, those sergeants, P.O. 3, P.O. 2, P.O. 1s in the police, and then the relatively low rankings, as you're talking about, again, the field personnel within the fires, corrections, and other agencies. You know, Mr. Chairperson, it's hard to argue with, we need to fill these positions with permanent people. That's not the argument here. And this is not to supplant those permanent hires. This is authorizing them to temporarily bring them back on payroll, to be able to hire them in a full capacity, only to the extent that the vacant position is not able to be filled by that person who has deployed. And there's also conditions here, like they have to be in, you know, fit conditions that the chiefs of these agencies or the agency heads actually look at, you know, making sure that they have the mental and physical faculties to be able to do the job. So, Mr. Chairperson, you know, sometimes the rhetoric gets pretty thick. But the bottom line is, the service needs to be done. And we're not taking away a permanent, full-time position for these retirees to come back. We're just saying, retiree is able to come back, he has made that known to the agency head, he is then able to come on temporarily to fill the position vacated by that person who's gone out on military deployment. And when the time comes, if it is available to them, they invoke it. And frankly, these redundant sections that you see here, I'm gonna ask my staff to go ahead and do a provision in the law that allows for them to do it more on a permanent basis, so we don't have to deal with it every single budget session. But I think we get the gist of the purpose here. I think that deleting this would be not just wrong, it would be taking away a tool that is available to our law enforcement and public safety officials to effectively accomplish what they're set out to do, and that's to defend our people and our community. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on the amendment, and I object.
Thank you very much, Senator Tenorio. Senator Palacios?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just spoke with the Director of Corrections. Of course, we passed number 8, but it's the same concept. I understand the Department of Corrections currently has three. It had utilized this in their last fiscal year. The deployment, I've been rather using retirees to cover them for deployment for the Guam Police Department. I understand that they never had this thing going because retirees from the Guam Police Department probably may not be interested for one reason or another. But my point here, Mr. Chairman, is the inclusion of these provisions, Section 8, 9, and 10, they are harmless provision. I mean, as they're there, we allow the chief of police, the director of corrections, the fire department to utilize it if they need it. If they don't need it, no harm. If they need it, no harm. And the point is, is again, it allows a flexibility and not to commit this government to a long-term expenditure that might ultimately end up with surplus of personnel that this government probably cannot afford to pay. Now, I support on a standalone bill for additional personnel for law enforcement community that would never be removed despite the return of a deployed personnel. But these provisions, 8, 9, and 10, for that matter, allows only for that. If it's for two months or two weeks, then people that come in to fill in for the deployed individual would know that as easily as you come in, you go out. Now, the concept of hiring permanent position in anticipation of constant vacancies, but different ranks, like I pointed earlier, was complicated. And of course, I support the retention of... And of course, I support the retention of Section 9. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator Palacios. Any other member wish to discuss the amendment? Senator Taidegui?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Of course, I'm objecting to this, but you know, I really want to know the intentions of trying to strike this out. And I have a question to the, I guess, the amendment, to the author of the amendment to strike this out, if he would be, if he would yield to my question?
Senator Rector, will you yield to a question?
Being that you're the president of the union, would these temporary employees be not allowed into the union if they were temporary employees?
No.
So in other words, temporary employees are not allowed into the union?
No, that's not what I said. Temporary employees are allowed into the union.
They are allowed in the union?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Taidegui. Senator and Speaker Wampat, and then Senator Ogden.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I know there's only probably a few of us who've been here a little bit longer than others, but one of the other things that we do know is that, and if we remember, that when we did this early retirement, it had actually caused the government to have a mass exodus of employees in departments and agencies where there's this institutional knowledge, extensive training and experience. So we've lost many of those employees. And for the most part, granted, the departments have been starting to fill those positions. But in addition, about, I would say, maybe three years ago, there was a collection of the number of individuals, employees, GovGuan employees, who have been on military duty. And the departments and agencies that have been impacted the most are those in the enforcement and, of course, DOE. So this amendment, which has, yes, expanded from police officers to correction officers to custom and quarantine officers to firefighters, was done primarily to try to fill those void. And as much as, you know, the author is saying that we would like to have all of these permanent employees, and I think that that would be the ideal situation, and I think that that can be addressed, and I think it is being addressed as well, as you know that there are our monies that are being available now to hire anywhere from 12 to 18 in these departments and agencies to increase their workforce. So until then, and until then, of course, that monies are available and surely not in this particular fiscal year, that we must have another avenue to assist these departments and agencies. Otherwise, we're going to find that there are not going to be anyone to supervise or to roam the streets and to make our island safe. So because of those reasons, and until we have something a little bit more permanent, then I too would support leaving that section in rather than deleting it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Speaker Wampat. Senator Ogden?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. You know, I think for not wanting to repeat some previous comments, I think it's very critical that at least for the people who are watching, understand the nature of what we are looking at and the provision that would be deleted. Section 9 reads, "Temporary employment of retired Guam Police Departments." Officers, I'm sorry. "The Guam Police Department may hire retired Guam Police Officers if a critical need arises because of military activation of police officers. The retiree hired shall fill such a vacant position and shall be terminated when the incumbent returns from military service." And then it goes on to read, based on additional provisions. But you know, Mr. Speaker, when you look at this particular provision and as well as some of the other provisions, I look at it as a tool and as a mechanism that is given to these law enforcement agencies to be able to fill positions that are vacated as a result of short-term military service deployments. And by virtue of just having this tool available, I think it recognizes the critical nature of supporting law enforcement, the importance of ensuring that in fact, these directors as well as the chief of police have this particular tool immediately available. Now, I believe the oversight chair had shared that in the last year, that this particular provision was not utilized. And I will say, based on conversation, a very brief conversation with a representative of the police department, it was not utilized in the last, in this fiscal year, specifically because of budgetary constraints. That's the notification that they were given. It's not because of lack of trying. It's my understanding that when this situation arose, there were three or four names that were forwarded based on trying to bring back retired police officers back into the system to be able to fill in the temporary positions of these military-activated police officers. But because of financial constraints, the front office, in this case BBMR perhaps, did not authorize the hiring of these individuals in the interim. And I say that because that's the reality of the situation. When we're talking about fiscal challenges, we recall very distinctly back in April, when in fact, a million dollars was being taken out of our coffers, and it was extremely difficult for all of the government of Guam entities, inclusive of the law enforcement entities, to be able to receive their financial allotments. That's the reality of what we faced at that time. But knowing, at least from my perspective, that this is a tool that is being provided to the chiefs as well as the director of these respective law enforcement entities, that they always have that opportunity to pull individuals back so that in fact, you don't necessarily pull a recruit to fill a full-fledged duty out there in the community without having to have completed their required training, whether it be Belaya slash the OJT service, time and service requirement out there in our community. And it says that retired police officers who have received all of the necessary training, who had, until their retirement, been certified in terms of providing public law enforcement services to our island and our community, who's very familiar with the environment and what to deal with when, once they enter the arena, re-enter the arena in terms of providing law enforcement services. I think that this, just looking at it from that perspective, it's not an arbitrary provision that this legislative body decided to, okay, let's give this tool this flexibility. No. It was very intentional in terms of recognizing that during the course of the deployment of a U.S. armed services member, that here is a mechanism that can be applied so that in fact, you can backfill that uniform position and ultimately not feel a pinch in terms of providing the optimum services that you can provide with the limited manpower that you have. I want to close, Mr. Speaker, by saying, I recognize that the number of law enforcement officials, and I'm sure that every single member in this body recognizes that the number of law enforcement officials that we have in these respective entities perhaps are not the ideal numbers that we would like to have in place today. But as long as we incrementally work on it, such as the police department was able to access COPS funding, federal funding, at least for the next few years, and they are in the process of recruiting 14 additional uniformed police officers, and I know that some of the other law enforcement entities are looking at avenues in which they can be able to also recruit new personnel, uniformed personnel. At least there's ongoing efforts in terms of trying to address the limited manpower that they have. I don't want to say shortage, but the limited manpower that they have to be able to reinforce the services they're providing to our people. The bottom line, Mr. Speaker, is that we're at the verge of an incredible Guam buildup, both the local civilian population as well as the military population. And yes, we need to provide additional personnel for our law enforcement. But right now, we're discussing a tool and a mechanism that has worked in the past that should continue to be made available to the chiefs, the respective chiefs and directors of these respective law enforcement entities, so that in fact, should they need to exercise it, then that would be available to them. So I certainly support retaining Section 9 in place. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Ogden. Any other members of the body wish to discuss the amendment? The Rector amendment is to delete Section 9. Senator Rector, did you want to close?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I want to thank all my colleagues for their meaningful input in this provision. You know, I never doubted that the good intent of my colleagues when they did this, to try and temporarily fix the problem. But unfortunately, we found out on Guam that temporary fixes are like temporary classrooms. They stand up, they don't become temporary, they become crutches for us, and we use them until some kid falls through the floor and hurts himself, right? And this is the same type of thing. It's a temporary fix. It's enabling a broken system. We have to quit being enablers. And that's exactly what all these provisions do. It's like the parent that feels bad because their kid's starving, but their kid's really a junkie, and they keep giving him money, and the counselor will say, "Quit giving him money because you're enabling this person's habit." This is exactly what we're doing. We have a wayward child in our government that isn't functioning the way we want to do it, so we're throwing bad money after good. And my colleagues testified about the shortage of people with institutional knowledge, how important it is to have people that know what the system and how many we lost during the early-out program. Hey, that early-out program was what, 10 years ago? I mean, good God. We need to be replacing people from that early-out program. We should have been doing it 10 years ago so that now they would have had the institutional knowledge. But just because we didn't do it then, doesn't mean that we shouldn't start doing it now. At some point, we have to step up and bite the bullet and start looking forward to future generations. Because right now, what we're doing is robbing from the future to scrape by in the present, and we're not even doing a good job of scraping by in the present. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Rector. Is there an objection to the amendment? Yes. All in favor of the Rector amendment to delete Section 9, please raise your hand. All right. The amendment fails, okay? Any other discussion on Section 9? Senator Adak? Oh, I'm sorry, Senator Adak. I did have Senator Palacios on Section 9, and then I'll have you follow. I apologize.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I already had passed out an amendment, which is actually after the, I guess, on page 141, after the, on line 4, after the word "benefit," add a new sentence. And it is to read, "The Guam Police Department may pay for civilian volunteer police reserve stipends to police reserve officer to provide temporary services because of military activation of the regular police officer." This amendment essentially, Mr. Speaker, is recognizing that perhaps part of the unexpended amount appropriated for certain positions of a deployed individual, for some reason, perhaps maybe there's still funds remaining, maybe the deployed person had exhausted leave, but there's still an amount assigned to that position, that perhaps some money from there can augment the $45,000 that we earlier passed for stipends for police reserve officers. The $45,000 here, Mr. Chairman, would only pay for 15 reserve officers that will perform not less than 42 hours a month. And of course, you remember about eight months ago, and my, of course, and my objection, the police department instituted actually directive not allowing police reserve officers to perform more than 40 hours because they said there aren't enough funds. Now, this one, they can look at what money may be available in case the retirees are not really, I guess, enticed to come in and qualify on the Section 9 for some reason or another. There's still probably funds available in that area. And if the chief of police may be authorized to use that as to augment the $45,000 and perhaps maybe increase the 15 to 20. If you can have 20 police reserve officers on a quote-unquote "full-time." Full-time to a reserve officer means 42 hours or more a month of voluntary service, then the $250 would be, of course, given them. And this is $3,000 a year, actually, per one so-called full-time police reserve. And so this amendment is actually provision to not just the retiree, and the civilian reserve officer is not to replace the retiree and be paid in the same level as the retiree, but only to allow the chief of police to utilize some of the funds that may be unused from the position of deployed personnel, but unused because you don't have retirees filling it anyway, and then maybe use part of that to augment for stipend only, not for wages of the reserve, but for stipend. I want to make that distinction. So that is the amendment. And whatever that he can utilize there would only increase, I think, the police reserve force. I understand there are at least 45 active police reserve right now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator Palacios. On the Palacios amendment, it would be to add a new line at the end of line 4 after the word "benefits" on page 141. And that would allow, "The Guam Police Department may pay for civilian volunteer police reserve stipends to police reserve officer to provide temporary service because of military activation of a police officer, regular police officer." Any discussion? Speaker Wampat?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I may have missed something here, but can I just ask a question of the author or maybe yourself, or you, no?
Will the author yield to the question? Yes.
My question then is that there's apparently some stipends here, and I'd like to know then that, is this a separate appropriations for a stipend that's available?
No, I think he's saying that they could, in lieu of, if they don't hire a regular police officer, it would be from the salary of that activated officer that could use to do the stipend. So there's no additional appropriation at all.
Oh, okay. That's very good.
But only to authorize the chief of police to look at that and maybe augment the $45,000 only that's available.
That's right.
So would there be, then, like, to be able to determine this, is that would there be like a fund or a pool of monies for these individuals that can be placed on the side so that then we can better track, then that these monies are actually then being used and not using other object categories to pay for these stipends?
It would be, I guess, if there was a transfer to the --
If I may, sir? Sir, I think whatever is earmarked for the salary of a deployed individual, it will come out of personnel category only.
Right.
Just that.
So would this fall under that category that where we had, that if any type of transfer is supposed to be made like this, that it then be filed with?
With, reported to the speaker?
Reported to, yes.
And the governor would have to then report the transfer?
Yes.
Pursue it to its transfer authority, because I'm assuming that this would be done through a transfer authority, that they would take the salary of that, put it in the stipends, and use it for that purpose. Is that the way you envision this, Speaker, Senator Palacios?
Actually, that's, of course, it just gave me an idea, but actually, it's more simple than that. It is just allowed, enable the chief of police to just use directly. But if you're going to use it for stipend, then you can transfer to stipend and then out of that stipend account, then pay out.
Pay out.
Now, that's two steps, but actually, my amendment, I didn't foresee that. The amendment is just to allow him to use whatever there and use it as a stipend. But I guess, I guess, the speaker is, I think we should have to qualify it in that fashion.
Yes. Okay.
It would amount to transfer then.
It would be an amount to, tantamount to a transfer
Yes.
of the deployed individual's salary to the stipend account, and then additional hours are able to be paid, or additional police officers, reserve officers may be activated with that additional transfer of the salary to the stipend account.
So, because there are two things that --
So it would be a transfer authority.
Okay, because there are two things, of course, that'll come to mind, is that, you know, if the monies are available, of course, they can be used for either salary increases or what have you, because they're all in the same object classification. Then the other is, could these same monies that are available then to also then hire these retired police officers? Not just those who are in the police reserve, but retirees as well?
Well, Section 9 allows that.
No, but to use the monies that are available for those individuals that are, have been activated in the military.
I think that would be the first option, I guess, first program that's allowed, and then -- Is that correct, Senator Palacios?
Yes, sir, that's correct, sir.
All right. Any other discussion on the amendment? Any objections? No objections? The amendment carries. Senator Ada on Section 9.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. My, my comments actually applies to Section 8, Section 9, and Section 10.
Yes, they're all pretty much similar.
If, if we've, we see that the common denominator here is that we are allowing for the temporary employment of these retired employees to fill vacancies that have resulted from military activation. And I bring up the question then, what about those vacancies that have resulted as a result of an employee being put on long-term disability? I don't have any statistics of how many employees there are in these three agencies who are currently on long-term disability status. I do know, for example, in one of the departments that's under my oversight, they have, you know, they have a couple of supervisors who have, there's one supervisor who's been on a long-term disability status for the past five years. There's another one who's also a supervisor who's been on the same status for two years. So I did check with the Department of Administration HR, and they said, right now, they cannot, those agencies cannot fill those positions. And, and of course, a lot of these employees are hanging on because they, they need that health insurance. And so I'm suggesting that, you know, whereas military activations, those vacancies could be maybe only for up to 18 months, I, I, you know, I have at least from this one department showing that you can have an employee from a supervisor on down who's on that status for, gosh, several years. So I would, I would just like to make an amendment to add in the word "to fill positions left vacant because of military activation or long-term disability status." I, I, now, I, I don't know if that's going to need a little bit more looking into, but, but that is, that would be the other condition that I would like to put in there that would enable the hiring of retired officers.
Okay. Thank you very much. There's an amendment by Senator Ada, and is there an objection to treating the amendment to be applicable to Section 8, 9, 10, and 11? No, no objections? Okay. So we'll treat the amendment as amending those applicable sections. I don't know about section, did we want to do for Section 12 also? There's temporary, again, that's temporary employment also, so inclusive of Section 12. So, and the amendment would be to add, after the military activation in those sections, or long-term disability absence? Is that? Okay. And so it would be, or long-term military absence of police officers, customs, et cetera. So on the amendment, I had Senator Munya Barnes, I had Senator Uggan, Speaker Wampat, and then Senator Rector.
Mr. Chairman, I really have no problems. I don't object to the amendment. As a matter of fact, I appreciate where the good author is coming for on this amendment. My only concern is, and if he can yield, is based on his explanation and based on the long-term disability that's needed, I just want to know that based on a disability of an employee at the time he is out, usually the benefits and that term of leave while he's out is usually paid, or the employee has up to six months to get paid for leave if it's shared leave. So my only concern is, if this is included, would there be a need to add additional funding for that temporary employee who gets, who gets picked up for that short period of time?
Are you directing the question to the author?
Yes, if the author can't answer it, if anybody has any, any concrete answer to, to the inquiry that I just posed. Because, because if you go, when a person is out, he, he utilizes the sick leave. If the sick leave is, is, runs out, there is a, a provision in law that provides for that individual to borrow up to who, the, there is a specified amount, if I'm not mistaken, an additional six months from whether it be a co-employee, a relative, from another section within the government, to be able to, for them to utilize that leave process, that leave-sharing process. Now, I'm saying if, if this amendment were to be put in, like I said, I don't have the, an objection to the main intent, but I'm just wanting to make sure that would there be a need for additional funding resource to employ that temporary employee for that specific amount of time? Because if you do it for military deployment, what happens is, is, is they don't get paid from, from the agency where they're coming from, because there's an other resource, they're deployed, they get military benefits, they get military pay and all that, but when they're disabled, not on workman's, I'm talking about the disability for that long period of time, somebody got a heart attack, you know, somebody had a stroke, they have to be up for an extended time, there's leave borrowing that, that may be kicked in. I'm just saying, for that period of time, would there have to be an additional resource to pick up that employee? I just wanted that answered.
Yeah. I would think that there'll be a little bit, you know? If you borrow leave from somebody, then it's got to come, that's already budgeted, that the leave is a budgeted. So if you were leave-sharing, the leave that is given to you is already in the budget, so there wouldn't, there would not be additional money to pay for that.
So if they hired a temporary employee to cover for that long-term disability, take for six months or a year, based on that timeline, then, 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 then that agency would have to acquire the additional resources, am I right? Because it's not budgeted. Because you will be giving that employee with that, with, with, who is out for that time, still has that opportunity to get paid within that, within that process.
If they are still on the payroll, then they would be drawing from the budgeted position, so you would have to-
Find the additional resource.
That's right. But if they were leave-sharing, then that leave is budgeted. So it would be for whatever time the employee remains on payroll.
Right, so the agency would have to come up with that additional funds if that, if that position was critical.
If it's-
Because you, you literally have to pay almost two for two-
If it remains filled.
Right, if it remains filled, right?
Or it's paying disability benefits.
And I guess unless there's a justification within the agency to move object classes around, there may, they may need to come in for a special kind of funding.
Sure.
Is that a possibility?
That's a possibility.
Thank you. Just wanted to state that for the record.
Thank you, Senator Barnes. I had Senator Uggan, is he? Senator Uggan, and then Speaker Wampat.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, just for, before I make any comments on the amendment, can I make a suggestion as it applies to Section 12? If, perhaps it could be inserted on line seven, "When a critical need arises or long-term disability occurs," because-
On Section 12?
On Section 12, because there's not the, it's not a complete duplicate language.
Okay.
So, so if I can suggest that it be incorporated into line seven, right after, "When a critical need arises," and then insert the language, "Or long-term disability occurs."
We will do that. That would be a technical amendment.
That would be my, my recommendation, because I was looking to see if, in fact, it actually fit into that particular paragraph.
All right.
Mr. Speaker, I certainly endorse the amendment, but the only question I have is whether, in fact, and I, perhaps if the sponsor of the amendment can, can please respond to this inquiry, is I, I was under the impression that his concern was more or less a general concern as it applies to government and Guam employees. If, in fact, they're on extended leave, disability leave, do the agencies have, this is, this was my reading, do the agencies have the flexibility to be able to pull in professionals or prior, not only uniform personnel, but individuals who have, like, for example, rev and tax? That provision would allow for other tax collectors, prior tax collectors and tax professionals to be able to step in and fill the gap during that, that short period of time. And my understanding was that that perhaps was the nature, the direction of his amendment. Now, if it would only be applicable and restricted to law enforcement, if that was his intent, and then also as it applies to Section 12 with Department of Revenue and Taxation, then I really have, have absolutely no problem with it. I still have no problem with it if it's going to be inserted there, but I'm trying to understand exactly what his intent was. Was it more on a macro perspective and allowing that flexibility to government agencies, or was it still law enforcement-specific, uniform personnel-specific, and a rev and tax as it applies to that provision? So, Mr. Speaker, if I can ask the, the sponsor, the good sponsor of the amendment to just respond, please?
Senator Ada, will you yield to the question?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The intent was to make that additional eligibility criteria applicable just to Section 8, 9, 10, 11, and 12.
Okay.
Just to those departments and not government.
Of rehiring retired people.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. So only applicable to law enforcement, and then, and then as it applies.
These provisions, yes.
These provisions. Okay. Thank you very much for that clarification, Senator Ada, and thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. Speaker Wampat?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, there's been a lot of, you know, discussion, of course, has been taking place, but more importantly, it's just brought up more questions, to my mind at least, and, and I don't know whether you are in the position to be able to answer this, or is this something that's already established in personnel rules and regs? My question, of course, is the definition of temporary, because then when you define exactly what the temporary employees are by the number of work hours, and secondly, whether benefits will be included in, in, or provided to those temporary workers. The other terms that I, that also I think needs to be really clarified are when you say long-term disability. And some of these long-term disabilities can actually fall under the category of those individuals who are in workman's comp as well. Then the other question I have would be, how do you know, and what, by what certification is there, I mean, are all these individuals in, on long-term disability have been certified, and by, by whom? So I, I, I can't make a decision in terms of how I'm going to support this or not unless I have answers to those questions. Then the other two classification that we have to consider here is that when an individual, an employee is out for military duty, the salary is still within the budget, the benefits we continue to pay for in retirement, in increments, all those we continue, the government continues to pay for, but not the, the salary stays. When you're talking about somebody who's in an extended time or long-term disability, the salaries and the benefits are all paid out to the employee, so then there's going to be no funding for this particular individual that's going to be hired on a temporary basis. So, and if that is true, and that question has to be answered first, and if there's no funding to support this particular amendment, then I find it very difficult, then, in this particular case, to support it, because the, the money is not there, is false hope to these departments and agencies who then would like to fill this position. I mean, I understand how difficult it is when there are individuals absent for a long period of time, and then the work is compounded for the few who are there. And, and, and I know the long-term solution, of course, would be to allow the hiring of these individuals until such time maybe that the position is vacated, and then you can, you know, delete it afterwards. But unless there's going to be a provision to provide additional funding then to address these individuals in particular, you know, similar to what Senator Palacios did by, you know, saying that using the salaries as stipends for these officers, and then, of course, answering my question, and I really like to know what is the definition of a temporary worker in terms of number of hours of work performance, and does it include the benefits?
The question then is directed to who, Madam Speaker?
Can the mover of the amendment answer the questions? And if not, can I ask the chair?
Okay. So the question is, what is temporary, and how do you define it?
Yes, and I'd like to know by number of hours and whether it includes all the benefits.
Oh, okay. Senator Ada.
The temporary is, is, it's, it's temporary in nature, because he is only there to backfill a vacancy as a result of military activation, which we know will only be maybe up to 18 months. So once that vacancy, then, once that individual returns back from active duty, then there's no longer a need for that person, he's gone. So it's temporary in that sense, that he's only there while somebody else is gone.
Then I, I like to compare that, then, with what the Department of Education does when it hires temporary employees, like, for example, substitute teachers, and they're only there for, at the time when they're needed, when there is, you're right, an absent teacher.
Right.
But they do not participate in all the other benefits in their retirement, it's social security. So then, so, so now then, that brings us to the budgeted payroll
Right.
of that particular department, that will they then, when they hire this individual, what source, funding source will they use to pay for this temporary person?
Now, Senator Ada, are you referring to the, to the person that's going to be backfilling a long-term disability absence?
Yes.
Okay. So Senator Ada.
I, I, first of all, I, I think that this backfilling concept that we're looking at is not for somebody that's going to be just gone for a couple of weeks. I mean, just the, just the processing is going to take longer than that, and by the time you get that paperwork processed, that individual probably would have come back. We're talking about somebody who's going to be gone for a year, a year and a half. And, and one, you know, I, I think the underlying assumption here is that that individual would have exhausted their leave, and then from that point on, the, that, that department really does not have that burden for paying for that personnel cost. Therefore, funds will be available that have already been budgeted for to pay for that temporary hire. And, and again, so, so, you know, it isn't as if the department is not going to be, is not going to have some, well, there's the other source of funding, is that there may be other vacancies in the department, for example, vacant positions that they haven't been able to hire but was budgeted, those funds then start to lapse. And, and, you know, we, we just have to give, exercise good faith in the department, that they're going to take a look at these finances, and if, if they can fund for six months of temporary hire, then that's what they would hire for and not overextend themselves.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much, Senator Ada. Speaker Wampat?
So, so, Mr. Mr. Chairman, I know that these are the different assumptions in terms of using then other vacancies that may be available. I would think that the department would want to quickly fill the vacancies, and I know the request has always been to fund it, so that then they'll be able to hire. Is there, is the author going to provide for a funding source then to, to take care of these individuals, should there not be any vacancies? I, I always thought that the understanding is, I know when we do budgets, because we've technically at least appropriated, say, this is the appropriation for each department and agency, and we kind of balance out the amount, with exception maybe of the reserves, the rainy day fund, but that whenever we are to propose an amendment in which it would require then a funding, support, to be supported by a funding, that we need to also identify that funding source to support this particular amendment.
All right. I think that-
Mr. Chairman, I, you know, I, I think the idea here is to basically establish the policy as to under what conditions that a temporary employment can be given to retire- that a temporary employment can be given to retired officer. The minutia of how or where that's going to be funded, I think that's really going to, you know, be up to, we're going to have to leave that to the management of that department to be able to, if, to do it without overextending themselves on what was authorized in their budget. But, but right now, all they really need is, yes, in the event of those vacancies, you can hire retired police officers, for example, to backfill. Now, we can put language provided that funds within the personnel budget are available to support that temporary hiring. Maybe that language would, would, would then provide comfort to everyone.
Okay. So, would you like to then?
Maybe if you just give me a few minutes, I, I can work with counsel and see what kind of language.
Thank you very much. Couple minute recess while that amendment gets worked up.
The Committee of the Whole is back in session. The amendment by Senator Ada has been written up and is being circulated. And Senator Ada, would you then like to present the amendment?
Mr. Chairman, the amendment, and I guess first of all, I need to withdraw because the clerk did-
That's right.
I would need to withdraw the previous amendments that I made. And the new amendment to replace that would be, will be in three separate sections, in Section 8, Section 9, Section 10, and Section 11.
All right, so under withdrawal of the original amendment by Senator Ada, there's no objection to that? And then Senator Ada, you may present your new one.
And then, as stated there, after the respective sections that I've outlined and after the appropriate lines, after the word "officers," the following phrase will be inserted. Or "absence," so we're talking about being able to hire as, to fill vacancies as a result of military activation. Or "absence due to a long-term disability status which has been certified by a medical doctor," period. Departments may exercise this hiring authority provided its authorized budget for personnel is not exceeded, period.
Okay. On the Ada amendment, any discussion on the Ada amendment, Senator Rector?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Specifically on this amendment, and I discussed this with the author, but one of my difficulties is this is there's no real definition as to what "long-term" is. And that worries me, even though it says that "certified by a medical doctor." I mean, you know, even if I was a medical doctor, I would want some guidance as to what is going to be defined as "long-term." I mean, long to some people is a week, long to other people is a month, and long to other people might be a year. And so I think for the purpose of writing good code, I would definitely go with some sort of definition on that, because it just makes life easier for everybody if you're going to do it. But, you know, once again, this covers like a few specialty areas, but really, what about the eligibility specialists at public health? There's only five of them, I think, at this point, and when one of them's absent, who takes care of processing food stamps for the poor and the needy? What about social workers at mental health? When one of them takes ill for long periods of time or goes on deployment, who's going to replace them so that they can service those most in need in our community? What about the custodians at the hospital? When one of them takes leave, who's going to clean the operating rooms and make sure that our hospital's sterile for our people? You know, there is not a position in our government of Guam that is overfilled, there's not a department in our entire public structure that has an excess of employees, in spite of what some pundits in the media might say. I know it to be different. Everybody, every department, every agency is running full beyond the capacity and is burning out their employees left, right, and center. So it worries me when we're just prioritizing these five specific positions as if the rest of them aren't important. And I did do a little checking, my staff was a little checking, zero firefighters have been used currently under this provision as it stands, zero police officers has been used for this provision as it stands. So, once again, it worries, it just makes me feel that we're putting forth bad legislation to make it seem like we're doing something, as opposed to actually doing something. So I'm afraid, I appreciate the intent of the maker of the amendment, because really, we need to deal with these absences, but I just don't think this is the right way to do it. So I rise against this amendment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator Rector. Any other discussion on the Ada amendment? Senator Ogden?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. So I take it that this particular provision is not going to be added to Section 11?
Pardon?
That this provision is not being added to Section, I'm sorry, Section 12?
That's correct.
Okay. So basically, this is his amendment now?
Yes.
Exclusive of Section 12, because our previous discussion was to incorporate it into Section 12?
Yes, he withdrew that amendment, which was included Section 12, and is limiting it to 8, 9, 10, and 11.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Ogden. Any other discussion on the Ada amendment? There's been an objection to the Ada amendment. All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Speaker Wampat?
Just like to ask a question. Mr. Chairman, there must be somehow a definition of long-term, of course, disability in the book somewhere in the government, because how else then are we going to be able to, you know, allow this absence for a long term? So, I mean, I'm not saying I'm going to halt everything now at this point, but I would think that under Department of Administration or Civil Service, there must be a definition to qualify an individual then to be then considered, and I know certified for medical reasons by a doctor, that it is a long-term illness beyond, you know, one week or 10 days or something of that matter. So, I mean, I'm not saying I'm objecting, I'm just saying that there must have been, or there must be a definition somewhere in our books.
Okay. Thank you very much, Speaker Wampat. Senator Palacios?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just give me an idea, I'm not suggesting that the figure that I'm going to throw out would be the definition for long-term, but normally, even for temporary employment, TLA or things like that, it's normally limited to not more than one year. One year, Mr. Chairman, is 2,080 hours on a 40-hour workday. So maybe we say that a position has been vacant for more than 2,080 hours. I don't know how we can multiply that, but we can arrive at that, at least we have a formula, then that position at that point may be declared long-term. If it's more than 2,080 hours, then it's been vacant, then that's long-term, because then we know that that's more than a year. That's just a suggestion, and I think more than a year would be probably a good definition for long-term. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator Palacios. Senator Tenor, did you have your hand up?
I just wanted to respond quickly. The whole genesis of this amendment was to have what the title is, temporary employment of retired, whatever they are. So, you know, it's not that difficult to put in a provision that says if the position is vacated for X amount of days, something like that, then this provision shall not apply. But I also want to emphasize that the purpose of this, and correct me if I'm wrong on the mover of the amendment here, but the reason that many of these provisions exist in these areas is because of the critical nature of their service. We're not just talking about any Guam employee, we're talking about people who are responsible for public safety in large part in our government, which frankly is one of the most important priorities of this government. The temporary employment of, let's say, to retire corrections officers, because you have someone who's deployed, or because you have somebody who's got a long-term disability, which isn't certified by the medical doctor, kind of rises to the purpose here. Now, I wouldn't be avert to the idea of putting a limitation on it, like the good captain, Senator from Tlalpanco Order was talking about, where we say there's a threshold that you cross, and past that threshold, this provision does not apply. But, you know, it seems to me that we need to be careful, we need to allow it, if you have a person who's got a long-term disability, for the retired employee to be brought back on to fill that position. But we don't want to get in a situation, which is to the merit of my colleague to my left, which talks about the filling of that position with a retiree, where you should have a permanent person employed. So I think this goes to the essence of each one of these sections, and I understand and I appreciate, and as a matter of fact, I support this provision, because we're talking about the hiring of retired individuals who have already held that position for a temporary basis in the absence of a military deployment, or in this case, someone's been certified by a doctor who's going to be a long-term outside of the department, so we can actually have them. And one more thing, Mr. Chairman, is people need to understand that there is a provision in these sections, and I don't need to read it, but the provision is that in the return of that incumbent, that retiree is no longer going to fill that position. They have to vacate the position. So when that person is no longer sick, in this case, if this amendment passes, then they have to leave the position. So you allow for the retiree to be there in the long-term care, in many cases, we know people who fall ill of cancer or some other malady, they go for long-term treatment, you have the retiree fill the position in the meantime, and then when they come back, they have to leave the position. So I think this is a reasonable amendment, and I support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Senator Espada?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I don't know where I stand on this amendment yet, because I, you know, if you look at really the intent of these sections that were put in, at least from the budgets that we've dealt with in the past, it was specifically to address the activation and the deployment of, you know, we were finding that a lot of our people in uniform here were then putting on their military uniform and being deployed abroad. And these sections were basically put in to address that specific situation. Now we're expanding the intent of this whole section to include long-term disability status. Now, again, I have also a problem with what is the definition of a long-term disability status, because if we're talking about somebody who has a long-term disability who may not be coming back anymore, what happens then? Does that position just kind of stay filled with a temporary worker? And yet, that, again, that temporary worker no longer is viewed as a temporary worker, it will be for the whole duration, I would imagine, of the absence of a long-term disability status. So if that person with a disability never comes back, then that temporary worker is actually the permanent replacement for that worker. So I'm not really sure that we should be going down this road considering the initial intent of these sections, which was to address the deployment of our men and women in uniforms to fight abroad, right? Leaving behind their jobs, thus creating some kind of vacancies and need to fill those positions. Perhaps you can answer, because I'm not really well-versed in terms of what happens, Mr. Chairman, if somebody does come down with an illness, say for example, cancer that needs to be treated, and then, you know, over three, four, or five years, just constantly cannot come back to work. I mean, I'm not really sure, and if the person doesn't voluntarily resign, what happens?
Senator Ada?
Well, I'm just asking anybody, because I'm not well-versed in this.
I did ask that question to Department of Administration HR, and because I know, for example, I have, I know I have information, for example, in one department, there's an individual who's been on long-term disability status for, gosh, going on five years. That position, he can't come to work, they cannot fill the position, and, but the individual, of course, is hanging on because he needs the insurance coverage, but for as long as he's there, that position cannot be filled. And so I, so that's the answer to that.
Okay. Thank you very much, Senator Ada. Senator Espada?
Okay, so if that position cannot be filled for as long as he's out, and I empathize with the whole argument that this person who has a disability definitely is dependent upon insurance coverage, but in the overall sense of running the government, then you have to wonder, is this a backdoor way of hiring permanent personnel by calling them temporary personnel? Just because we want to be able to allow somebody with a disability to be qualified for government insurance, and yet knowing full well he will never return back to government service? And I guess that's the catch-22 that I have in my head, is like, how long is a temporary position considered temporary? I mean, you know, if you're filling in for somebody else, I guess you're the temporary fill-in, but if we know that a person probably, the prospects of the person who he's filling in for is never going to come back, then we really can't deem that as a temporary replacement. And again, I just go back to the original intent of these sections, which was to allow for replacements, temporary replacements, for men in uniform who are getting deployed. And I would like, I think we need, before we open up a whole can of worms in terms of just allowing others in, I think, and like I said at the very beginning of my statement, I wasn't even sure, but through this whole process of vetting out some of my thoughts and articulating them, I think I would have to be against this amendment. Again, and restrict it just to the people who were deployed, and allowing the retired personnel, police officers, corrections officers, and so forth, to come and temporarily fill those positions until those men in uniform come back to take their original positions. I think I would stand by that position. So I too, sorry to say, cannot support this amendment. Thank you.
Point of clarification, if I may? Senator Palacios?
Of course, I listened to the comments, and I think, right here, the provision of Section 8, 9, 10, and 11 is strictly for the temporary hiring of retirees, and at no time may any of this evolve into a permanent position, because if you continue to withdraw retirement money, and the temporary status is strictly cash and carry, more or less. So, to use this as a, I guess, a preliminary leading up to a permanent appointment, it cannot happen under the provision elsewhere in the sections, because it's only for retirees and not for anything else, not for civilians, not for whatever, it's only for retirees, and I like to point that out.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator Palacios.
I have a little point of information on this, on this same subject. You know, for years, the Department of Education has used retirees, and that program has been, though those were supposed to be temporary, we know retirees that have been in the same job category for years, and even when that job category disappears, the principal, if it's a favorite of theirs or a friend of theirs, might just move them into a different category so they can keep retirees double-dipping in the same place for years. Now, does it happen all the time? No. But is it, can it be abused? Yes, we've seen it abused in the past. So, just a little point of history on that. Thank you.
Okay. Senator Guthard, last point of history and point of information?
You know what? We're making too much out of this. This is a tool.
Yes.
This is a managerial tool to use if it is needed. At times we need it, at times we don't need it. These are not permanent appointments, these are temporary appointments, and we should be very grateful that we have competent people out there that are willing to come in and help out for a while to serve this community. Now, going back to the teachers, I want to thank the teachers, the retired teachers that come in to help our school system. I don't care if they're there for a month or a year, if they're there for years because they're needed. Now, the superintendent has a responsibility to oversee the hiring of temporary retired teachers, and the superintendent should make sure the principals don't play games. And I agree with Senator Rector with that, with reference to that issue. That's a ju- That's the job of the superintendent. You use them if you need them. But let us recognize these people. Thank God we have them to help out. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. On the ADA amendment, Senator Ada, would you like to close on your amendment?
Mr. Chairman, I just, you know, some of the arguments is that, well, first of all, I think that the focal point here is the need to fill vacancies in these particular public safety agencies. And the way that we, the quickest way that it can be filled, the most efficient way, is to hire retired officers who are already well-trained and experienced for those particular jobs. Now, probably the ideal solution to prevent vacancies from occurring, so that then we don't have to deal with the situation, is to prohibit every police officer and firefighter from joining the reserves. And I don't think that's what we want to do. That's certainly something I will not support. The suggestion was made that, well, now we're expanding it, and now we're including to, providing the authority to hire to fill vacancies left by people who have them as fortune of suffering some kind of injury which has not allowed them to work. And maybe the solution to that is just be, you know, just throw out all the compassion out the window and just fire these guys, you know? You can't come to work because you're sick, or you lost an arm, or whatever, then fire them. Then that'd be the perfect solution. Then we don't have to deal with this issue. But I don't think that's what we're about, and I don't think that that's a solution that we want to pursue. And as I agree with the senator from Anguilo, this is a tool, and we've got to exercise some good faith in our department directors that if it is needed, it's available to them within certain parameters. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator Ada. So, there was an objection to the amendment?
A point of, well, I want to give you more information. We just contacted DOA.
Yes.
And Ms. Martinez said she was going to be sending some information, because there's apparently a difference between long-term disability in which individuals can still work, but then there's a long-term medical disability, and how that then may affect the operations of a department. But I know we're waiting for that information to come here, so I don't know if that would help anyone in its decision, how they're going to vote for this amendment.
If, point of information, Mr. Chairman, I think maybe that situation you're talking about, for example, there was an individual that I know at one of the agencies that's under my oversight. The individual is injured and can no longer do that specific work that he was doing. And so now he has, but he can still work. So now what they've done is they reassigned him now to go on light duty. So now, instead of, you know, strapping pallets or whatever and moving heavy things, now all he can do is go and deliver paper from office to office. But he can still work. But that particular position that he left is still basically vacant.
Okay. All right. So, the response is that may not be applicable to this. So, we will call for a vote on the ADA amendment. All in favor of the ADA amendment, please raise your hand. All right. So, we are now on, again, I guess we've kind of discussed 8, 9, 10, and 11 as being allowing retired officers in these agencies to come back to work under certain conditions. And any other discussion on any of those sections? If not, we'll continue then to Section 12, Temporary Employment of Retired Department of Revenue and Taxation Employees. And this section would allow Department of Revenue and Tax to hire retired employees when a critical need arises in the areas of tax collection, taxpayers' assistance, investigation, auditing, and processing. And again, they shall be hired at step one for the position in question and shall not receive sick or annual leave. Notwithstanding Title IV GCA, retirees hired pursuant to this section may continue to receive their retirement benefits. Any discussion on this section? Any, Senator Rector, you recognize on this section?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Once again, I move to delete this section. Once again, this is a temporary fix, not designed to solve a systemic problem in our government. We know that 25% of our taxes go uncollected, according to the public auditor, and that's because we don't have enough people collecting taxes even as we speak. We need to have a system where we have people coming through the system, gaining that institutional knowledge, becoming the valuable employees of the government of Guam that all of our people need, not once again putting Band-Aids on cancer. So therefore, I move to delete this section. Thank you.
On the motion, on the amendment to delete Section 9, I have Senator Ergen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Section 12, I'm sorry.
Thank you. On the motion, you know, I understand the concern of our good colleague and the mover of the amendment to delete Section 12, but I think that there's one thing that we need to also keep in mind as we discuss the overall budget. You know, Mr. Speaker, we had gone through the numbers in terms of Department of Revenue and Taxation, and you had shared with us that, in fact, the department is going to be receiving a significant amount of financial, additional financial support for this upcoming fiscal year, fiscal year 10. And based on that, they will have that opportunity to be able to properly recruit for key personnel within the department. They will have that opportunity to be able to ensure that hopefully over the course of the next eight months, six to eight months, that all of their people, the new hiries or new hires, would be properly trained so that in fact they can adequately provide the services or improve upon the services that are already being adequately provided by this particular agency. So, I mean, in terms of moving towards possibly deleting this, Mr. Speaker, I think that anytime that you provide a critical agency such as Department of Revenue and Tax, who have over the course of the past many years have always publicly come out, at least the director's come up repeatedly, asking for additional support, well, the budget is incorporated in here. By virtue of the numbers that are being provided in this budget through your committee, you were able to reinforce that funding requirement. Now here's another mechanism that if, in fact, any of their individuals, their professionals, leave by virtue of establishing a critical need, then at least this would be a tool, an additional tool, that will be available to the director of Revenue and Taxation, so that in fact the services being provided to our people and the anticipated increase in population is not hindered negatively, or is not affected negatively. And that, I think, is something that we, at least from my perspective, that I need to be cognizant of in terms of not only providing these agencies with the tools and the mechanisms, but like you have incorporated and inserted into this budget, the funding necessary to support them over the course of fiscal year 10, so that they can continue to provide the services, and so that they can reinforce the personnel that they have in place. And I think that the mover of this amendment has always mentioned, let's work on a permanent fix. Well, that's part of the permanent fix, is providing the financial support for fiscal year 10, so that in fact they can recruit properly, but recognizing that there may be a lapse time for the training, well, you never know, the director in October, November may say, based on the unanticipated increase and demand for services, it presents a critical need, and we may have to call in retirees from this agency. And I think we need to be able to provide the director with that tool and that resource readily available. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Sis, masi, Senator Ergen. Speaker Wampat.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, this is one particular section I think that's really very critical to the government. I mean, just, I mean, just as stated here, to provide for critical needs in the areas of tax collection, taxpayer assistance, tax investigation, auditing, and tax processing. Of all the departments that I really think is very important to this government would be Revenue and Taxation, because they're the ones who will be collecting these monies to help support all these other departments and agencies. Now, I know we've always said that, yes, education, public safety, and health are critical areas, and we want to put as much as we can to support those three departments. However, without Rev and Tax, we can't support those agencies. And it's only at times, certain times of the year, when these positions are critical, just like it is for the Department of Labor, when they go out and need to do the census collection, then data collection, and it's, you know, seasonal. By the same token, you'll find that these are as well. But they have been in a position that makes it very difficult for them to go out and collect and to audit, and you know it very well, this most recent processing of the taxes, the income taxes to pay, is that it's taking, it was taking longer because they were lacking the personnel needed to do this. So of all departments and agencies, I'm sorry, but this is one section, one department, that we should not hold back or delete. And more importantly, the training time is not as critical here, because it says they're going to hire retired employees. These are employees already who knows the job, and it's just that it's their time to retire, but they can still come back and provide the assistance. And I have to commend you that even in their regular budget, you had provided additional funding for a number of personnel to be hired permanently, which is addressing the real situation, a permanent fix to help this department, but more importantly, is that we're giving them additional assistance. So, I definitely do not support the deletion of Section 12. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Speaker Wampat. Senator Palacios?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I too support the retention of this section of all departments, I think, and this one has nothing to do with deployment. This has to do with shortage, and we know what it means to invest a little bit of money into giving them more personnel. The director himself, I think, at one time testified that if you put in $100,000, you can bring in, what, over a million dollars in collection. I think it makes sense, and again, this is a tool. If you need it, it's there. If you don't need it, you don't have to use it. I support the retention of this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator Palacios. Senator Munia Barnes?
Sis, masi, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I just want to stand here and support the retention of this Section 12. The Department of Revenue and Taxation may hire retired employees from Department of Revenue and Taxation when critical need arises in the area of tax collection, taxpayer assistance, tax investigation, auditing, and tax processing. And it also further states that this retiree shall be hired at a step one for the position in question and shall not receive sick leave or annual leave. And then, of course, this position will be temporarily in nature, and they will continue to receive their own benefits. That's specifically what Section 12 actually says. And as the previous speaker spoke about the mechanism and being able to give the tool and the mechanism needed for this, Mr. Chair, if you give a little to be able to get a lot back, that's not a problem. As a matter of fact, that's better. Rev and Tax continues to be the arm that brings in all the revenues for our government. Our government here is to provide for the basic benefits to our island community as a whole, and we should not be taking away from this vital agency. If there is a mechanism in place, if there's a need that arises, even if we gave this agency the equipment, you just never know. And if you can arm, you know, it's like having extra ammunition, or it's like having an extra backpack for needed supplies, there's no harm to that. And I think this is a very critical section when it deals with an agency who literally brings in 95% of the revenues that come into our island. So I literally support the efforts of the retention of keeping Section 12 in this budget bill. Sis, masi.
Thank you very much, Senator Munia Barnes. Any other members of the body wish to speak on Section 12?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I, you know, perhaps just wanted to shed additional light on this. This section, of course, was also included in the governor's submission, and it was basically a carryover from previous budgets. And the reason why, you know, it's kept in here is, as everybody mentions, it's not, we're not trying to circumvent or cut back on the resources available to the Department of Revenue and Tax with regards to permanent employees. We have, in fact, in this budget, gave a significant number of employees and amount to Rev and Tax to fill these vacant positions on a permanent basis. But as everyone noticed, and as testified by the Director of Revenue and Taxation, in order for these employees who get hired permanently, to become fully effective, the training period, the familiarization, even if they come to the department with a bachelor's in accounting, even at that, they still have to undergo IRS training, et cetera, familiarization with the code, the procedures, et cetera, that may not bring them to the full effectiveness of, in that position immediately. And what this has meant is that because of the lack of funding over the previous years with regards to putting permanent positions and permanent employees there, that we have seen an erosion in our revenue collection. And there is an opportunity and funding available to the department for this tax enforcement team, you might want to say, that they can bring on board. Part of the collection, for example, on the, I think it's, part of the collection on the passport allows the tax enforcement to be ramped up and hired, individuals are hired to accelerate enforcement of the tax laws and codes to accelerate collection of revenue, can be hired using that funding source. And so that funding source is available, and then this tool allows for somebody to be brought in on a temporary basis that is immediately effective, having the background and knowledge, and of course, having worked with the department. So, as everyone mentioned, and as we are very cognizant in the development of this budget, we did not just put this provision without providing permanent resources to the department. We included that, so perhaps this coupled with the recruitment of permanent positions will allow us to close that revenue gap in terms of the collection. It'll allow us to bring in individuals that will, allow us to close that enforcement gap between those that follow the law and those that don't by providing additional resources towards the enforcement of these laws with somebody who is immediately effective and available. So, again, it's not meant to supplant, it's meant to augment, and we have provided in the budget bill permanent resources for hiring of permanent employees. So, I just wanted to kind of give that perspective on why I think it's worthwhile to keep this provision in here, even as we are providing those resources to the department. So, thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Sis, masi, Mr. Speaker. Are there anyone else wanting to speak on the Rector amendment? If not, Senator Rector, would you like to close on the amendment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I would. You know, once again, we all agree on the need for additional revenue agents, and we agree with the need to get it done. Here's my problem with this. It's not that we don't need it, and it's not that I don't commend the good chair of the Finance Office and Budget, or Budget of Office of Finance, whatever FOB stands for. It's not that I didn't commend him for finding and accessing It's not that I, I didn't commend him for, for finding and accessing additional revenue so that we can hire people. I agree with that. But, you know, the governor already has the power to do this. He can declare a state of emergency at any time, and under that, he could, he could go forward and hire retirees if he thought it was emergency. These are line item things that, that he can do with his power as governor. Did he not think that it was an emergency, that we're only collecting 20, 75% of the revenues owed to us? And if he didn't think it was emergency, why not? You see, I, I worry about these things, right? Why are we, why is this legislature enabling something the governor can already do? This is my question. I mean, because realistically, at the end of the day, is this going to make much, much of a difference to the bottom line? No. We found with the other temporary hirings, it, nobody ever takes them. I mean, there's nobody in Customs and Quarantine, no police officers, no firefighters retired take these things. And maybe some retired accountants will come back and take it, maybe they won't. Who knows? But one must wonder, why are we doing it? One. Two, shouldn't we be coming up with a better system if the governor can't do his job and declare in a state of emergency and do it? Shouldn't we come up with a system that fixes the system, as opposed to creating another temporary stopgap? These are my problems. So thank you very much, and I appreciate the, the time to express these. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Rector. There was an objection to the amendment to delete Section 12. All those in favor of the rector amendment, please signify by raising your hand. Okay, motion fails. We are now on section, anybody wanting, wishing to speak on Section 12? If not, we'll move on to Section 13, the locum tenus exemption during the absence of the chief medical examiner. Senator Uggan, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I'm glad I got the good speaker Ben's approval to, to speak. I just, I apologize. No, no, this is a provision that would allow the chief medical examiner's office to forego or to be exempted from the Guam procurement law. And I, obviously, I'm not part of the history of this particular provision. Can I just get an explanation as to why we would exempt the Guam, the chief medical examiner's office from the Guam procurement law rather than a specific section of the procurement law? And, and making it that, that much more specific as opposed to total exemption from the application of the Guam procurement law? So I don't, I'm not familiar with the history of this.
Senator Uggan, I'll go ahead, and that was brought up previously, but I'll go ahead and yield to Speaker Ben Pangolinan. Would you like to yield to this question, Speaker?
Yes, it actually, it, it may not cite the section, but it's actually a specific exemption, and it's a specific exemption for hiring a professional service of a chief medical examiner to cover while he's off island. So he's not exempt from the procurement law for all purchases. It's only for having somebody come in on a temporary basis to replace him, so that we don't have to go out for an RFP for professional service of a chief medical examiner for the two-week or three-week period that he's off island.
Okay, so, so, so you're saying that in fact, the language, the subsequent language in contracting for professional services is really the, the restrictive phrase that only applies it to that, that exemption in the procurement law? Okay, I just wanted a clarification of that because I was somewhat concerned about the overall exemption application on the Guam procurement law. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Okay. Are there anyone else wishing to speak on Section 13? No objection? Section 14, advanced payment for medical services. I will go ahead and yield to Speaker Ben Pangolinan.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I mean, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, there's an amendment that's been passed out to Section 14, and it basically, I'm trying to find it on my desk. No, no. Section 14.
The amendment was passed out?
Yes, it was. Thank you. It's the amendment to Section 14. Advanced payment for medical services.
On page 142. Does everybody have the amendment? If not, I mean, if so, Senator Speaker, you can proceed.
Thank you. This is a, an amendment that would allow advanced payment for medical services. Their procurement code does not allow for advanced payment of services or goods, but what we found, and what was requested was that by the Department of Public Health, was to allow the arrangement of advanced payments for medical services for patients who are referred off island. This allows us to refer our MIP patients to off-island facilities. And the, the bill, as introduced, limited them to California, Hawaii, or Manila. And we wanted to change that to include just Manila, Hawaii or Manila, or the 48 contiguous states for medical treatment. And that really just gives Department of Public Health and Social Services the ability to avail itself of more facilities and better pricing and for the delivery of those services. There are times where you can get the same treatment in a JCO-accredited institution, much cheaper in Arizona, for example, than you could in California. And so we wanted to allow the MIP Medicaid Office to, to have that flexibility. So it allows, again, it just strikes out the, just limiting it to California and allowing it for the contiguous states, Hawaii and Manila, of course, with the JCO-accredited hospital there.
Okay, there's several one, Speaker, before I proceed with the, our colleagues to speak on it, I just want to make, make sure that you correct the technical page on that. It's page 142.
Thank you very much.
Yes. I'll go ahead and address the point of inquiry first before I go to Uggan, Blas, and Wampat.
Thank you. Just clarification from the Senator.
And Rector.
Madam Speaker, Madam Chairwoman, this does not affect the language dealing with the air ambulance, does it? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. I will go ahead. Thank you, Senator Guthard. Senator Uggan?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I just would like to, to thank the, the good speaker Ben for incorporating this particular language and providing, really, the Department of Public Health Social Services under the guise of the MIP program, the flexibility. I think there's one aspect that, in conjunction with allowing for advanced payments for medical facilities, obviously, that's providing, I guess, addressing some of the historical nature of, of previous years in terms of having difficulty with paying, and some, some medical facilities in the mainland do require at least upfront payment. The other component, and I think that this is really where my complete endorsement of this, in addition to the advanced payment and the flexibility being provided under the MIP program, is really when you have family located in other jurisdictions outside of Hawaii or in other areas in California. The good speaker mentioned possibly Arizona. I know of an individual who had received services just this summer in Texas, and apparently that individual was asking, by any chance, there, there's that flexibility incorporated in the program? And I think that this would, would directly address that issue. And this, that individual received medical attention in the state of Texas primarily because she recognized that that was the specialty area, which in fact was providing the best services, best quality services throughout the contiguous states in the mainland. And also because of importance was that she had significant number of family members who were residing in that particular location. And I think that that, that certainly is, is a unique consideration in terms, as long as these individuals qualify under the MIP program, as long as, in fact, they're going to receive the appropriate medical specialized attention, regardless as to our location, as long as it's JCO-recognized, and we can be assured that they're going to receive the proper quality services, then I think that this flexibility really is in line with supporting families as they receive medical services in the mainland. So I certainly thank the speaker Ben for expanding this and allowing for the advanced payments. But most importantly, I think the family aspect is something that really rings very close to me in terms of an issue that was brought to my attention over the course of the summer. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Point of inquiry?
State your point of inquiry, Senator Guthard.
Yeah, if I heard correctly, the amendment deals with the 48 contiguous states, Hawaii or Manila. Don't you think it's unfair we should put Alaska? Yeah, we cannot leave Alaska out. Because we have the 48 states, we have Hawaii, that's 49, one state is missing. Can we add Alaska, Mr. Chairman, please? There are tremors on Alaska. Thank you. I moved, Madam Chair, I'd like to make an amendment just to add Alaska to the listing.
Yeah, I was gonna, that was a point of inquiry, so.
Could I make an amendment, Madam Chair?
Speaker, Speaker Pangolinan, there was a point of inquiry to that, to that question.
Or just, we could just say the 50 states.
For the record, Hawaii is a state.
I know, 50 states and Manila.
You know what, we're, we're going to take a 10-second recess. This legislature's back in session. I'm going to go ahead and yield to Senator Guthard. She had a point of inquiry, it was addressed. You have an amended version to that, Senator Guthard?
Very simple. Just simply replace the word California and Hawaii as follows. Expedite acceptance of MIP clients by facilities in the 50 states or Manila. And then that continues the same. Did you want to add Thailand and Malaysia?
On that amended, the amendment to the amendment, Senator Uggan, you're recognizing it, Senator Blas?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, when I was reading through the, the proposed amendment or this particular section, it also reads on the last three lines, "And other medical facilities accredited by JCO," the Joint Commission on Accreditation of Healthcare Organizations of JCO, determined by the Director, "to be best able to serve medically indigent program clients." So I don't know if it's restrictive only to, to the 50 states and Manila based on the previous statements, or is it somewhat expansive in terms of ensuring that, that at least these medical facilities are JCO-qualified?
That's a point of inquiry?
No, 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 I'm making that statement because in light of the proposed amendment, you know, it, it expands it, and it's inclusive of the 50 states, but in the same token, it may be that much more flexible in the latter part of this section. But I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the members. But I support the amendment.
Thank you, Senator Uggan.
I have a point of inquiry.
Senator Blas, you're recognized on Senator Guthard's amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And, Madam Chair, I, I appreciate that we expanded it to, to say the 50 states. My concern, though, is when we expand to say the 50 states, and then we talk about a city in the Philippines, referring to a concern that was brought up by, you know, the good senator from Kenyatta, of whether or not some of these facilities that are JCO-accredited are actually in Manila proper. I don't know where St. Luke's falls under that, it being in, is it in the Manila proper? I know it's in Quezon City. So I would proffer that an amendment to that amendment is change 50 states to...
Senator Blas, can we go ahead and dispose of Senator Guthard's amendment to, to the original amendment, and then we'll go back with you on that one?
Okay. I don't problem with 50 states.
Because I, I would like to work.
But it's just the way you worded it, ma'am, when you said 50 states and Manila?
It would be advanced payment for medical services in order to expedite acceptance of MIP clients by facilities in Manila?
If he wants all of them, my amendment.
No, no, that's okay, that's okay, no, let's, let's deal with the 50 states first. Then we'll go, then we'll go with the discussion on Manila. Yeah, that's easier.
Okay, so on Judy, on Senator Guthard's amended, to the amendment, to the amendment, I have Senator Rector.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, once again, I, I, I think we're going down a slippery slope here, and it, as much as I'm in support of it, when I, I look at the, the bottom line accredited by the Joint Commission on Accreditation Healthcare Organizations, then I would have to ask if, if we're saying Manila, are all the facilities in the Philippines, even if we amend it to Philippines, but currently now it says Manila, are all of them JCO-certified? So then in that case, this would prohibit us from using any place over there that's not JCO-certified, the way it's currently written. But if some are, are currently JCO-certified, then that tells me that you can have places other, in, in other areas of the world that are JCO-certified. So could someone, for instance, if they have family in Japan, go to a JCO-certified doctor there, or hospital there? Or what if they have family in Hong Kong or Taiwan? I, if, so if the, that, that's my, my question, my point of inquiry with the maker of the amendment.
Yes, Senator, Speaker Pangolinan, would you like to yield to that inquiry?
The, the experience that we've had with regards to MIP was sending MIP clients to Manila in the past, and then, of course, California and Hawaii. And the prohibition, or we were not able to send, we did not allow under the program for them to go anywhere else. And so the proposal would be, as amended by Senator Guthard's, remove California and Hawaii and allow the 50 states, and of course, and then it remains consistent with the existing language of Manila designation for that, for treatment approved by the medically indigent program and the Director of Public Health and Social Services for the advanced payment to access those facilities. It would limit the facilities to those, or the referral of these patients to facilities in those jurisdictions and those geographical locations. And again, that's been based upon just the experience of where the patients have gone in the past, and the cost of the program also is, is part of that consideration in, in sending the patient to that, as well as to the availability of that. These jurisdictions were placed there so that it kind of closely mirrors the GOV-GUAM program for the employees. This is a, a provision that allows access to these facilities by the MIP program run by the Department of Public Health for our individuals who are not insured by any other insurance and fall to the availability of healthcare under the medically indigent program. So it, it was, these areas were designed to kind of mirror the GOV-GUAM health insurance program of those facilities that are accessible to our GOV-GUAM employees who are under the private health insurance. And again, it leaves some discretion to the Director of Public Health and the MIP administrator in making that determinative, determination of, of where they can best go, guided by the fact that the facilities they need to send them to would need to be JCO-accredited for the insurance of the quality of care available in those facilities in those jurisdictions.
Thank you, Speaker Pangolinan. Senator Rector, does that answer your inquiry? Okay, there's nothing further. Anybody else wishing to speak on the Guthard's amendment? If not, all those in favor of the Judy Guthard's amendment to the amendment, please signify. If there's no objection, motion carries. We are now back on the original amendment, as amended by Speaker Pangolinan. I do have now Senator Rector, then Senator Wampat. That's right. Senator Rector, if you may, excuse me, I go back to the line. It is Senator Blas, Senator Rector, and then Senator Wampat. If you, Senator Rector, you're recognized.
Thank you. You know, once again, as we, as we go through discussion on, on this floor, it's amazing how many smart people come up with ideas to make good ideas better. And as, as we started talking about... started talking about this, and it came up to me that, look, if we have JCO-accredited facilities in the Philippines, then I'll bet you we have them in Japan and Australia and probably in Taiwan as well. And so one of the, one of the issues with this is we have citizens here that are also nationals of these various countries. Now, the healthcare in Australia is national healthcare. So if we could step up as a medically indigent plan, instead of sending these folks to, say, California to get the treatment where we have to pay for the treatment, if we can prepay just getting an Australian national back to Australia, it's free. That would save us money, far more efficient. And the same if we could get a Japanese national back to Japan, national healthcare, it's covered. Or if we get a Taiwanese national back to Taiwan, healthcare, it's once again national healthcare, and it's super cheap because it's only 4.5% of their GDP. It would save us, save us a whole lot of money and allow nationals to go back to where they have family and friends. So I would like to post the amendment to go right along with the rest of this, in order to accept the, accept the of MIP clients by JCO-accredited facilities, period, and then delete Hawaii, Manila, and the other 48 contiguous states for medical treatment. Well, I guess we take the period out. So I'm inserting the words "JCO-accredited" in between the words "by" and "facilities," and deleting Hawaii, Manila, and the 48 contiguous states, or whatever the amendment just said, the 49 contiguous states, or the 49 states, or the 50 states.
Okay. Do you have that in writing?
I can certainly do it in a half a second.
We'll take a 10-second recess. This legislature is back in session. Ladies and gentlemen, as proffered by Senator Rector, it would read Section 14, Advanced Payments for Medical Services in order to expedite acceptance of MIP clients by a JCO-accredited facility for medical treatment approved by medically indigent program. The Director of Public Health and Social Services may advance payments for said medical treatment or air ambulance program established by Section 33, comma, Chapter 5 of Public Law 28-150, comma, and may establish escrow accounts for immediate and advanced payments of medical treatment at hospitals and other medical facilities accredited by the Joint Commission on Accreditation of Healthcare Organizations, JCO, determined by the Director to be, to be best able to serve medically indigent program clients. On the amendment, I'm, as Speaker Pangolinan, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I certainly applaud the intent of the amendment. However, I think that what we want, or what was requested by public health, was to basically remain within a system that they're available and have relationships with. Public health has actually traveled to the Philippines and are able to negotiate contracts with JCO-accredited facilities in the Philippines. In some instances, we have relationships with facilities in California, and those facilities in California have other facilities in the other states. And believe it or not, the same hospital owned by the same hospital chain in California and one in Arizona may have a different fee schedule, but they are owned by the same company. And so the Department of Public Health has relationships with these facilities, and so they are able to negotiate these payments. But because in the past of our history of not being able to make payments on a timely basis because of how we've treated the MIP funding levels, these facilities have actually shied away from accepting MIP clients. And so what we were attempting to do here is, in order to save money, we know that these facilities will accept clients if we assure them that we're going to pay in a timely manner, and we put in an escrow account that allows us to pay them upfront, and then deduct on a billing schedule and reconcile the bills after the provision of the care. So it is that element of these relationships that we're trying to allow public health to avail themselves of, not facilities elsewhere. So while the intent is good and well, it's not realistic to then require public health to allow these patients to kind of call out where they want to go so that they can go to this facility or this facility. It still requires and keeps them within a realm of facilities that they have had dealings with in the past. And again, these are for the, for patients who are part of the MIP program. So while I understand the intent of trying to broaden the availability of these facilities, what we have to also deal with, I think, is the resources available at the Department of Public Health to talk to these facilities, to develop these relationships, and to allow access to their facilities with advanced payment if they're not able to accept them with a promise to pay, as we have in the past, because we haven't been able to pay in a timely manner. So, well, again, you know, the safeguard, I guess, is that we still fall back on the fact that the medical treatment needs to be approved by the medically indigent program, and the Director of Public Health then may make that decision that would allow the advanced payment for the treatment pursuant to, of course, the provisions of the MIP program. So I just wanted to articulate that, that while we are saying, we are, you know, it's kind of like, as Senator, as the good Senator mentioned in the last time, we have a provision in here that allows them to do it, but nobody's doing it. Well, I think that the provision of allowing them to do this and go to Taiwan and Hong Kong, realistically also, I don't see that happening because of the available resources and the relationships that the MIP program administration has been able to build with these facilities. Realistically, we've had experience. The resources are there that have allowed us to deal with JCO-accredited facilities in the Philippines, in California, in Hawaii, and because of the fact that in our dealings with these facilities and these organizations that have facilities in Hawaii and California, that they also have facilities in other states that we already can deal with that may allow them to do that. But, you know, again, it's one of those provisions of saying, yeah, we're going to do this, but we're not really going to do it, because we know that where the resources are available is to deal with these facilities in what was originally in the bill, which is Hawaii, California. And to an extent, we were expanding it because of the multiple units that these facilities and companies have in California and Hawaii. In other states, we're still dealing with kind of the same people and expanding that. So I really don't object. I just wanted to articulate that, that it's one of those amendments, too, that, you know, we've seen in the other ones, it's there, but it's not really there. We're trying to do something, but we're not really doing it. We're helping the situation, but we're not really helping it because of what the limitations are. It's like, yeah, you can hire retired GPD employees, but nobody's ever been hired. Yeah, we can hire, so we should get rid of that, you know. We're doing something that we think we're doing, but it's really not going to happen either, and that it will continue to be what is available within the realm of the resources of the administration of the MIP program and public health. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there anybody else wishing to speak on the Rector amendment? If not, Senator Rector, would you like to close?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I appreciate the comments of the previous speaker. And yet, I, you know, this amendment doesn't mandate that it allows nationals of other countries to go to these countries. What it does is it allows the Director of Public Health and Social Services to establish more cost-effective relationships if he can. And that's an important thing. I mean, we talk about the limited resource of the government of Guam, and it's funny, because the reason this came to mind is because I knew a gentleman that was an Australian. He was an Australian national. He'd lived on Guam for 10 years, so therefore considered a resident of Guam. He had a heart attack and didn't have the money to go to, through the system. He needed to get back to Australia. He went to the MIP. We funded a lot of it until his family was able to raise enough money to get the airfare. But it would have been so much more cost-effective for public health for the Director to go, hey, maybe I can just call up somewhere in Australia, and we can pass this burden on to him, because he paid taxes in Australia for the majority of his life, and this is a benefit as an Australian national that he can take advantage of. So maybe that would be something, well, out of the compassion, out of the goodness of his heart, and the Director says, but by the same token, he served the people of Guam for 10 years, and he qualifies for MIP, and it doesn't behoove me to discriminate against this gentleman. So these are things that, I think this is a tool that we're giving to the Director to explore more cost-efficient ways, make life better for families on Guam. As we all know, the citizens of Guam come from all walks of life, come from all nationalities, and we shouldn't discriminate against the people that come here just because they're poor, which is what this would do. It only allowed them to go where some people have family and not where everybody has family. Thank you very much.
Okay. Sido's masi, Senator Rector. On the Rector amendment, is there any opposition? If there's no objection, no objection? Motion carries. We are still on Section 14. Okay, it's already 5:25. We will call for a recess and come back, resume session at 10 o'clock tomorrow. No objection?
No objection.
You know what? For the record, we'll go, the amendment carried on.
I have ten minutes to defend the amendment.
Right. So I'm sorry, let's, before we go ahead and call the recess, any other folks wishing to speak on Section 14? If not, if there's no objection, motion carries. It's already 5:25 or 5:27. We'll go ahead and take a recess to 10 o'clock tomorrow morning. Motion carries. Recession, still 10.